It has alerted me that we have some devices for those who may be having or hearing impaired. So if you feel like you would like to have a device, we have those devices available. So raise your hand if you would like one. Seeing that everybody here can hear me splendidly, I want to say no to that. Okay. So why don't we do this? Let's take, this is the Budget and Finance Committee meeting. Today is Tuesday, May 30th. This is the first of four budget committee meetings that will be reviewing the FY '18 budget that's submitted by the mayor. Roll call first, Council President Kenneth Vasquez.
Yes, here.
Vice Chairman David Abdu.
Here.
And voting member Brian DePena.
Present.
Our president and under the chair, Mark LaPlante, would you please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution and to the Constitution of America, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we have a very full agenda. We will have a full agenda tonight, Wednesday night at 31st, Thursday night, June 1st, and we return again on Monday, June 5th. We do have many, many departments to go over. This evening, the way that we will begin this meeting is we have the overseer, Sean Cronin, who will give us his opening comments. We do have countless of slides that he has provided for us so we can follow along. Then what I will do is there are what I would consider to be the more important but less fiscally nuanced departments. We will deal with those smaller, quote-unquote, smaller departments first, and then the bulk of the evening will be spent with the Lawrence Public Schools. Both the public schools, the Great Lawrence Technical School, and then we'll also deal with the fire and water and sewer. And then finally, we'll deal with the mayor's office and city council at the end of the evening. So with that, I'll invite Mr. Cronin. Welcome, Mr. Cronin, welcome. And as I always like to say, you're always welcome, but we're looking forward for your stay to end. But I'm sure you agree with me on that.
I do, very much. Thanks for having me and let me go first. So what I wanted to do is just paint a higher level picture.
Are you going to be using this microphone?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right. So I'm just going to, you know, go high level for the most part and just give you my thoughts on the budget as presented by the mayor. But before we go forward, I want to look backward a little bit. You know, there's been a lot of great things accomplished since the overseer position has been here, my predecessor, Bob Noons, and then myself. You've had balanced budgets without using one-time money. You've had surpluses in your operating budgets several last eight years. The only exception to that was the winter of 2015. Budgets have been approved on time. Your fund balance levels and reserve levels have increased. You've had a reduction in your receivables. You had a bond rating increase. You now have in place a capital plan, a set of financial policies, and a forecast, and you're working with MSBA on multiple school projects, something that hadn't been happening before. Not going to go through all these in detail, but they show the trends that I just talked about. So you can see the budget surpluses at the top left. Other than that one year, they're all up going back until FY '09. The receivables, you can see that from the high watermark, a pretty significant drop down. And then the fund balance levels, on a total fund balance and a non-reserved basis, both of them have increased, which, again, very positive traits which have led to the upgrade. Some other ones, free cash, top left. You see that growing both in dollar values and as a percent of budget. Excess capacity, which is the difference between what you can levy and you do levy. You see that you had no taxing capacity available for a number of years, and now you do.
Mr. Cronin, I recall that I spoke, I think we just fixed it immediately.
All right. So you have some taxing capacity there. New growth, which is extremely important in a prop two-and-a-half environment. You've got to grow your tax base in order to continue to provide the services that you want to. You'll see that it's grown, both, again, in dollars and as a percent of the prior-year levy limit, two very positive trends. And assessed values after the downturn in '08, and this graph looks similar to a lot of communities across the state. You had the drop, and now it's come back. Lawrence still hasn't hit your high point back in '07, '08, but there is an upward trend there, which is obviously very positive. So about two years ago, I was here and talked about a path to end state oversight. And, you know, my focus and my background is, you know, really the long-range financial planning, capital planning, and, you know, said that instead of making decisions on a day-to-day basis, it should be looking at how any decision you make today really impacts the long term. So that's why we talked about having policies, a forecasting tool, a capital plan. You know, the policies talk about how much should go into capital, how much should go into reserves, how do we use free cash. And the little diagram over there on the right just shows how they all come into play. They all intersect. There are three very important tools that we like to see municipalities across the state implement. And then the forecast, as I mentioned, you know, Mark and I had, you know, literally been able to play around with it, see different scenarios for capital planning. It's a very important tool to have, and also for collective bargaining. We were able to cost out and show you what, you know, what 1% versus 2%, et cetera, means. So the city has accomplished these. It's great. Very, very positive steps again. Contract negotiations. You know, one of the first things I had spoken to the mayor about was where are you with all of your contracts? Amazingly, all of them were expired, some since 2010, which means employees hadn't had any sort of wage adjustment outside of any steps they might have had since 2010. So since then, seven of 13 have been settled, and they've been settled in a manner that was both fair to the employees and affordable for the city long term. So the remaining contracts, which are the biggest ones, obviously, are two fire, two police and one fire. We're currently negotiating with the unions now. And those contracts will have, will play a significant role in the long-term financial condition of the city for years. That's why, going back to the previous slide, everything should be about long-range planning. This is really, in my opinion, one of the last parts that's left. You know, once these contract negotiations come to an end in a way that is in the best interest of, again, both the employees and the city, then I think, you know, the need for any state oversight does go away. Some other challenges, though, and, again, Lawrence is not alone. You know, I have the pleasure of being able to look at these things 351 different places, and every community is a little different, but there were some places where they're very similar. And it's this slide right here. Pension and OPEB liabilities. OPEB is other post-employment benefits, basically retiree health insurance. You know, that's close to $600 million of unfunded liabilities the city has. And if you look at your pension schedule, you're still below 50% funding. You're pretty far out in the funding term. You're at 2037, the max is 2040, and your assumed rate of return has come down. It's now 7 and 3/4. I believe it was north of 8% a few years ago. But driving that down, I think, is a prudent thing to do over the long term. And while we're talking about pensions, I know there'd been some talk about, or at least in the retirement board, about taking the assets out of the state and managing them locally. That's something that I certainly wouldn't advocate for. The state has a $60 billion portfolio that they invest, and I think Lawrence keeping their money in that system is the right way to go. So just in terms of the budget, and I look at it slightly different than Mark. Mark nets some things out, and I do more gross. So, you know, $290 million is the all-in general fund budget when you account for your state assessments, which, when I say net, Mark takes them off because you don't have them to spend. They're going right back to the state to pay for certain assessments, like charter schools and transit agencies, those types of things. But you've got $290 million you're spending. And again, this is a picture that's very different than most communities. 70% of the budget comes from the state in terms of revenue, state aid. Less than 25% comes from property tax. That's very different across the state. In expenditures, you see about 2/3 is for the schools, about 15, 16% for the municipal side. The rest is debt service benefits and what are called non-appropriate. Again, those are cherry-sheet assessments that I mentioned a minute ago. So for me, just some kind of big-picture bullet points that I think you'd want to get Mark's take and the mayor's take as you go through this process. But it's a balanced budget, which is great, and that's really my role here, is to make sure that the budget is balanced. But there is $2.5 million being utilized, really out of fiscal '17 funds, for the fiscal '18 school budget that will not be there in fiscal '19. So that is something that you need to keep in the back of your mind, that if the schools build that into their budget, could be in a situation next year where that, well, you will be, where that $2.5 million is no longer available because it's one-time money. So then you'll be talking about other revenue streams to backfill that, or cuts. The CIP is funded per the policies adopted last year, which is great. We have in here funding for unsettled collective bargaining contracts, which was something the mayor and I had had a number of conversations about. We know we have to, we know the city has to give something to the employees, so we should budget for it. If you don't budget for it, and then the contract is settled, you're putting yourself backward, you know, and in a position where you're then going to make cuts in order to fund that. So this is a little bit more proactive. There is some reliance on some state and federal grants for public safety, 600,000-plus for police and 230,000-plus for firefighters. Again, we don't know long term if those are going to be there or not, so that is an area that, you know, we kind of hope for the best. Mark also introduced a lost time factor, which is totally acceptable budget practice, but what that does is it takes away some of the flexibility you have within your departmental budgets. So that, at the end of the day, would reduce, could reduce your fund balance in free cash. In another way, that money was normally budgeted, not budgeted for, so when there was a surplus, it fell into free cash. Now that it's being budgeted for, that's less in the departmental budget, which means there's less of a potential surplus. So when you, it's a positive thing because it helps balance the budget, but at the end of the day, it could be a con because you have less potential turnbacks at the end of the fiscal year. So, again, it's just something to think about when you're going through the totality of the budget. Employee benefits, which is a significant part of the budget, a huge part of this budget, being able to do what's being recommended, is the health insurance line item was kept flat, even though the GIC rates went up about 3.5%. And that was because, over the past couple of years, there's been surpluses, and now it makes sense to really give a hard look at that budget and see if any additional funding is needed. And I know Mark's continuing to look at that, but right now, it looks like you'll be able to level fund that line item. Your pension line item grows 4%, so right off the top, $340,000 goes for that. And there's no ongoing plan for OPEB funding in the budget. And a few others, there is, and this is something Mark, myself, and the mayor have talked about. Now that you have a CIP in place, and it looks like it's being followed, you need project managers in place in order to make sure that these projects are being done in a quality manner, and they come in on time and on budget. If you're just solely relying upon, you know, outside forces to pull off your capital projects, whether they're horizontal or vertical, you know, that's not a good approach to it. So by having in-house management take care of those projects, that's a very good step for the city. Enterprise fund, if you look at the budget, there's an $845,000 increase in debt service, but there's no rate increase assumed. So that means you're going to eat into retained earnings, and at some point, there is going to need to be a discussion about when do we increase, what are the rates? I don't think they've increased in, what, 10 years?
Seven.
So at some point, again, you retain earnings will come down, and you need to have that conversation. There's 26 and 1/2 new FTEs included in the budget, 20 of them in public safety. Mark and I had talked about, there's a number of funds throughout state finance statutes that really give you more flexibility, and they hadn't been adopted in the past. And now there's four of them that either have already gone to you or will be coming to you for adoption. And think of it as a better way to account for those funds, the money, instead of at the end of the year turning back to surplus. If you have a good year in workers' comp, it stays in that fund. If you have a good year with unemployment, it stays in that fund. Then the compensated absences, that take some of the pressure off the departmental budget because it can stay in that fund. So you're not spending any more or any less, it's just different where to count for them, and it gives you a lot of flexibility over the years, depending upon the caseload and those types of accounts. There is no deposit into the stabilization fund, even though the policies that we discussed last year called for it. And then the last bullet here is about Chapter 70, and I'll just go to this slide, probably a little bit hot to see up there, but the point of this is that Chapter 70 figures aren't certain. So if you go through from left to right, and you've got fiscal '17, the first box of the state aid numbers based upon the governor's budget, the middle box is on the House budget, and then the far-right box is on the Senate. So as you see, there's more state aid as you go from left to right, and that's all Chapter 70. So we don't know where the budget's going to end up. You know, it's, the conference committee will probably be starting their work soon if they haven't already. But if you look at what it means for the city, it's a potential of up to $990,000 of additional budget flexibility you have. So as you review the budgets and as you get closer to the end of this fiscal year, hopefully the state passes a budget on time that will give you a final local aid number, you really need to pay attention to what that number is. Because, again, the budget, the mayor's budget is predicated upon the governor's budget, which is actually the low end. So it's good to be more conservative right now, but as you go along, pay attention to this. And as the note says, I kept the school budget flat for illustrative purposes. There's a decision that would have to be made there. Do you keep it flat? Do you give it more? Do you walk back some of the free cash you're going to give it? You know, those are some things that the city should really be thinking about. And then just to close with the capital plan. If you remember, again, a year ago, we talked about a capital plan predicated upon 6.35% of revenue, net revenue, going to debt service. And then growing over a five-year period, have your capital investment, total capital investment be 7.5% of prior-year net revenue. About six months after these policies were put before you, Mark and the mayor, the city went out to refinance debt. City saved a lot of money, and then what happened was math. So your debt service dropped, so six months after you set a policy, the number dropped. So the math became 6% instead of 6.35%. So what we want to do is have these codified back to 6% to reflect that refinancing, and then grow it to 7% over the multi-year period. And if you remember this graph from a year ago, the black line across is, well, let me start with the orange line. The orange line going down is your current debt schedule. So as you see, there's a couple of significant drop-offs going down to fiscal '20 and then fiscal '22. So if you at least maintain where you're currently at, which is the black line, you're able to leverage almost $30 million of capital projects by simply staying at the 6% number that you're at now. If you follow the policy to go to 7% and use all of that, which is coming from new growth, use all of that for capital, which, there's some flexibility in the policies. You can keep it in for pays-as-you-go capital to pay for smaller projects, or you could leverage debt. I wouldn't advocate using all of that for debt, but there's another maximum $13.5 million of projects that you could take advantage of. So at a minimum, the recommendation has been to stay at 6% for debt service and then take, I think it was $300,000 a year from new growth, and rather than have it go to the operating budget, you use it for pays-as-you-go capital. So for fire trucks, police crews, you know, smaller equipment and DPW, instead of having to borrow for that and pay interest on it. So there's a lot of ability for the city to undertake the capital projects that are needed. And then this just shows you how things grow over time. The dollar values show debt versus pays-as-you-go. And again, if you grow it per the original plan, you'd have $1,200 annually by fiscal '22 to go toward those smaller projects, and you'd still have 6.73 million of debt. And on a percentage basis, you see how that equates at the bottom. The debt is staying at 6% in this model, and then the pays-as-you-go gets you up to your 7%. So a lot of numbers and policies and percentages, but the bottom line is the city can undertake a capital project, a capital plan that has a number of school projects, you know, a number of park projects, reinvesting in police and fire equipment, you know, all those important items that a city, especially of this size, needs. So that's my general overview. If you have any questions or...
First of all, thank you very much, Mr. Cronin. We do have a meeting. I just, I don't want to go into the weeds. We will go into the weeds with Mr. Ryan Ellos as we go forward, and this is a good blueprint as we listen to his presentation, if you follow along what your thoughts are as we go through this. Give me a bumper sticker analysis of where we are right now, a 30,000-foot analysis, so I can tell my constituents back home, you know, we've got the overseer now, how are things looking? Give me conceptual, just a broad statement as to how you think things are going.
Overall, things are trending in a positive direction. Any of those graphs, they're all going in the right direction. You know, you have an extremely well-qualified CFO that has done a lot of positive things. I think overall, the city is definitely trending in the right direction, and those numbers are very, very good numbers. The ratings call with Moody's and S&amp;P, very positive. They see the direction that the city's going. It's all positive. And the economic development that helps spur that new growth, that's all positive, right? So a lot of good, positive trends.
Are there any questions or comments by members of the committee? Here, Renan, thank you very much, Mr. Cronin.
Thanks for having me.
For being here tonight and giving an overview and time out of your day to make this happen. So we do appreciate it. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
All right. So what we'll do at this point, we'll just, like I said earlier, we're just going to go through some of the smaller departments and go through them probably a little more quickly. We'll start off with the airport. Mr. Miller, are you here?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, councilors. Mike Miller, airport manager. I appreciate being a smaller department. I will start with the overall budget as presented to you is $586,325.
The page, please, Mr. Miller. We have it right there.
That, I'm, I'm sorry, but the budget?
177.
Thank you. 177 or 179?
177.
I guess, yes, we'll start on 177.
Got it. Right.
Okay, apologize for that. If you look at the expenditure summary on page 178, you'll see the various categories of personal services down through capital outlay. I'll go through that in more detail on page 179. Personal services, you'll see for the most part, it's level-funded from last year with the exception of salary and wages. They reflect an increase of $2,921. That figure has increased due to the settlement of two of the union contracts. I think you heard the overseer talk about settlement that took place this year, the Lash Union and the Laborers Union, which represent the administrative services, employees at the airport, and the operations. Also, it contains a $500 increase from my contract. So that group of the budget is increased by $2,921. The next portion, purchase of services, is an overall reduction. We looked at our energy consumption and forecasted out that we thought we could reduce it, and we did. You'll see a large reduction in our repair and maintenance for vehicles. We had a snow removal piece of equipment that required some maintenance last year, and that's why that was beefed up. So we were able to reduce it by a significant amount, but we also kept it at a higher level than we historically have been carrying because the average age of our equipment now is 14 years, almost 15, and it is starting to wear and break down, so we anticipate some additional expenses there. If you look at the very bottom of that grouping, you'll see employee training. I spoke with Mark. I'd like to attend some seminars offered by the Inspector General's Office for Procurement, and we budgeted a line item in that for the first time for employee training. But overall, that category within the budget has been reduced by $7,500 from last year. Underneath that, if you look at the supplies, we level-funded that. And then the intergovernmental, those are areas we have no control over. The first, the other assessments, which has increased by $4,122, is actually a pension assessment. That figure is given to us, and that's why that figure has increased from last year. And as you continue on, you'll notice that we, again, for the most part, level-funded with the exception of a reduction in our health insurance and our dental. We budgeted last year, we had an open position, so we budgeted the worst-case scenario if the employee that was hired required certain health insurance coverage. So that's why there's a reduction. The employee that we did hire didn't need the expensive options. I'll leave it at that. And in capital outlay, there's an increase from last year. That covers our matching shares for grants that I've come down here numerous times and told you we'd be receiving. Also, it will be used to improve, we're getting a new garage roof, so we'll be improving the heating system within the garage and swapping out, and we're also some furniture for the administration building. So that line item has an increase there. And overall, we came in at $2,306 less than we had for last year. And once again, this budget is funded 100% through the revenues at the airport, through fees charged to the tenants, landing fees to aircraft who land there, as well as fees associated with the businesses that transact businesses on the airport. And I'll take any questions that the committee has.
Do the members of the committee have any questions? Mr. Abdu?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Miller, for coming out this evening and presenting us a pretty austere budget. Question for you. The second line, I may have missed it. $7,500 drop in purchase of services. Is that just cost-cutting or?
It is. As I explained earlier, there was a $10,000 reduction in the vehicle maintenance line item alone because that was an anticipated significant expense for the repair of the, one of the motors on our snow blower. We also looked at our energy costs, which is the lights that we use out on the field. We have looked at, based upon past usage, we think we can make do with $3,000 less in that line item. And probably a larger one would be the water and sewer charges that were charged by the town of North Andover through some conservation, but most importantly, there was a leaky pipe that we discovered. It froze during the winter, and it was behind a bush. So we have had that pipe repaired and have seen that our water bill dropped dramatically. So that's why you'll see a $4,000 reduction in that line item. And we did increase the repair and the maintenance in one line item because of our service to the gates. They're over 10 years old, and we're having a lot of service calls. They do break down. But when you take the $10,000 reduction that we budgeted for last year for the snow blower and the reductions from the water and sewer and the energy, it nets out with an overall $7,500 reduction in that line item. It's from cost-cutting measures plus some savings from not having to have expenditures that we were going to plan on.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Other questions by the committee? Please, Mr. Chair. Mr. Vasquez.
Thank you. Looking at the personal services, are there any positions currently vacant?
No, there are no current vacant positions. There's nothing that we had a person in. But that being said, I want to condition that statement. At one point in time, we did have three operations staff up at the airport. We're down to two. So although there's not a position that's open that a posting will be posted for, we're still running at 2/3 of the staff we had in 2010.
And also, are you considering any retirements this fiscal year?
I'd love to retire.
Yeah. What about any of your employees?
I'm considering it, but I know it's an option I can't exercise. No, no one in, to my knowledge, Christine, are you going to stay around? Yeah. So to my knowledge, no one will be retiring from this department in the next fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. The only question I have is, I brought with me a previous budget, just to kind of give a sense as to where we've come from and where we are now. FY '16, there was a big, big dollar amount here. We were at almost $1.4 million. And a lot of that was transferred to a special revenue fund that is now being captured in the budget in front of us but was not captured in last year's budget. I know that's FY '16, but just help me understand why that was a transfer for?
It sounds like, without Mark can correct me or Ramon, it sounds like those are the transfers that were made to front-end fund our capital improvement projects, the runway safety areas. Two years ago, we did 1432. Now we're on 523. And I think we allocated some transfers to those projects in advance, expecting the federal and state grants to follow.
And did they follow?
They have.
And did the city be reimbursed for that, or were those matching?
No, those would have been out of the enterprise accounts, retained earnings. They were enterprise dollars.
So it went back into the city's, into the enterprise, into the airport's budget?
Yes.
Let's talk about that a little more offline. Tonight, we're going to be dealing with FY 2018. I have a, just a general question. I don't want to belabor, we have a lot of...
Sure, I'll make myself available.
...this evening. All right, so if there's no other questions on this, we're just going to, thank you very much.
Thank you.
There's no table, there's nothing, we'll just continue moving on, but thank you so much.
We're looking forward to seeing you on...
The 13th.
Two weeks from today. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Veterans? Mr. Melendez, is he available?
Good evening, Mr. Melendez. How are you?
Good, Counselor. Thank you.
Help me know, what page are we looking at for your budget? Do you know?
There was only a few changes. It's basically staying the same.
Hold on for one second. We gotta find your budget in the document. Page one forty-eight. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I basically wanted to say there was really no changes to the total budget. I just moved a little cash around for employee training and such and took it out of mailing. But other than that, the budget stayed the same. We kept it basically the same.
Any questions by members of the committee?
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Good evening, Director. Just two quick questions. Any retirements planned?
No, no retirements at all, no.
All positions are currently filled?
Yes.
For veterans' benefits, we still have, as of May fourth, we have spent $690,000 out of $850,000. Is that number different today?
It's basically on board. He does have that.
I just ran it today, just because I knew this question would come up. So the, in FY seventeen, he has, with one month remaining through eleven months, he has a projected overage in his account of $36,000.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions, members of the committee? Mr. Melendez, can you talk to me briefly about our veterans' population? Is it growing? Are we losing veterans? Where are we right now?
No, it's basically staying the same, anywhere between four and 4,500 veterans in our community. The big thing is...
Say the number again, please.
Between 4,000 and 4,500. The big thing that's happening is it's an economic boom for our veterans. There is opportunities out there for those that can, can seek employment. Obviously, there's a small population of those that are seeking care, behavioral health care, and at this moment, can't. But I'm moving a lot of my veterans into the employment arena. So that, I think, is why you're seeing a little bit of a dip and some overage left over. So it is positive as I see it. We still have veterans that are struggling, but we are doing all we can to help them.
Is it your opinion that we do have veterans out in the street right now looking for money on street corners and asking for money?
Yeah, I have approached some, and what I find is, and I hate to say it, but I find a lot that won't answer the questions honestly, don't even know the answers to some of the questions. The number-one question is, do you have a DD-214? If you do, bring it to me, and I can help you. Most of the ones that I encounter don't even know what a DD-214 is. So that tells me right away, there's probably a little bit of fraud out there. But I have found quite a few, and I have brought them in. So the homeless population in the state of Massachusetts for veterans is going down. You know, the state is working hard to diminish that number, and they're pretty close to getting it at zero. So we're working along with them.
Is there anything else you need from us as a city council to help in your mission?
No, your continued support. You're always there for our veterans, and I really appreciate it. I have reached out to some of the city council individually, and it's always been a positive outcome on behalf of our veterans, and I really appreciate that continued support.
If there's no questions or comments, we will thank you. Oh, Mr. Abdi.
Thank you. Mr. Melendez, real quick, the DD-214. I am fortunate and blessed to have a home with my own little office space, and God help you if you ask for my DD-214 today.
Yes.
So I think even the best of us, not saying that I'm the best, but that are organized and have placed DD-214s a lot like birth certificates and social security cards. Do we have the opportunity to provide them DD-214s if they can validate who they are in...
Absolutely, yes.
Because I know that can be a hang-up with a lot of veterans.
Absolutely. I have the ability to obtain DD-214s for any state or Massachusetts resident. For those that come here from out of state, I still have that ability to reach out through the federal government to get them. So I do have the ability to obtain a DD-214 on any veteran that walks in my office. Absolutely, and I let them know that. And I appreciate the opportunity to say it here because that's important. If you need your DD-214, you can come in my office, and I will obtain it for you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. And my last question, just because I wanted to close the circle. Do you know, and I think I know the answer, but I wanna confirm this with you. Is it unlawful for someone to say they are a veteran when they are not a veteran? Is there, it's the stolen valor clause. Is there a law that prohibits that?
There absolutely is. If you were to gain any benefit or award through fraudulently saying that you're a veteran, that is a crime. Yes, and it is punishable.
Is it a crime if someone were to approach you and say, "I am a veteran," and they're not, and they ask you for money, donations, assistance? Is that a crime?
That I couldn't answer because that's coming from a public donation. When I talk about an award, I mean getting some type of state or federal benefit as a veteran. That is definitely a crime. Someone committing fraud on the street, I would have to leave it up to the police.
If there are no further questions, and I'm not seeing anyone. So thank you very much, Mr. Melendez. Our budget, as a reminder, will be, I expect it to be voted on on June the thirteenth.
Thank you. Appreciate the time.
Is it a public hearing, or is it the vote and everything on the thirteenth?
The vote and the thirteenth, yeah.
But there is a public hearing that day, right?
Yes.
And then the here, and then the vote. Yeah, the discussion, councilors, just so we're clear, that Mr. Abdi was asking, councilors, what will happen on the thirteenth, and to clarify with Council President, there will be a public hearing on the thirteenth, followed by the expected follow-up with the vote of the budget that that evening. Next, I'm gonna skip over other human services. That's probably Mr. Ryanello, that's solo, right, Mr. Ryanello? Other human services, that's just you, right? You can talk about that independently. Let's deal with that later. Let's go right to the Lawrence Public Schools. Is there anyone here to speak on the Lawrence Public Schools? Councilors, as a reminder, we all received a copy of the Lawrence Public Schools. It's a document that looks like this. You all have it. Very good.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Good afternoon. Please identify yourself with the members of the committee.
Vivian Hader from the Lawrence Public Schools, as well as...
Mary Lou Bergeron, Assistant Superintendent at Lawrence Public Schools.
Thank you.
So we've submitted our budget to you for the fiscal year FY 2018. And this year, we've also included a request for 1.5% above net school spending, which is the 2.5 million that Mr. Cronin had mentioned earlier today. That would be out of the FY seventeen budget. In addition to that, adult education will be level funded, and the city will be picking up the cost of the three leases, as well as the transportation, as has been included to include the foster children, as well as the homeless children for the new unfunded mandate that came down from the state for McKinney and Vento. So those are probably the biggest highlights that you would see in this year's budget that would be different from last year's.
Ms. Hader, excuse me.
Yes?
Do you have that highlighted at all in the budget so we can easily reference it? Those two items you just talked about, are they, where can we reference that in the budget, in your budget?
We discussed the transportation piece on page... Page nine and ten, where it says adult education and transportation in the middle of that page. And this year, this past year, there's been a task force that's been across the Commonwealth to talk about the foundation budget, which is basically how we receive our Chapter 70 funding, which is ninety-five, over 95% of the aid that the Lawrence Public School District gets coming from the state. So the foundation is being reviewed in thorough across the Commonwealth, among many superintendents and business managers, and we see that as having a positive impact for Lawrence in the future as well. We just wanna make a point to let you know that we level funded all non-salary expenses in the district. So anything that wasn't a contractual obligation for our unions, all other costs incurred were level funded from the prior year.
Through you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President?
Ms. Hader, let's go back to the cost of transporting homeless students. There's definitely a very large percentage increase within the last five years. We can see a 535% increase in comparison to 2011. The cost per rider was $406. Today, or fiscal year 2016 last year, it was $2,171. That is a very large number. Can that be explained?
We're gonna ask Doris Marino to come up. She's our transportation manager. She, let's put those budget figures together, and we'll be able to explain exactly how those costs were derived.
2016. Hi, Doris Marino. I don't know exactly the increase here. So unfortunately, some of the increases that have happened, last year, we had a very large population of homeless students. What I've noticed this year is that there has been a decrease where some of the hotels have been closing down, so there's not as many, and there's a lot more shelters within. But I can't say unless I look up 2015, the per-student cost. But last year, within district and out of district, because we also have to share the cost with other districts that may be housed in Lawrence. We have a lot of shelters that have opened up here in Lawrence, so we are housing a lot of other communities that we share the cost with.
But the numbers as presented in the budget are in contradiction to what you just explained. You're saying that the number has increased, and the number of students has increased. But what I'm seeing here is that fiscal year 2011, we had 199 riders. In fiscal year 2016, we had 146, which is actually the lowest out of all the years presented to us.
Well, those were ones that we actually paid for transportation costs. We had a larger number, but they were riding on buses that were already in play, like the special needs buses or the regular ed buses.
Do you have the numbers? Because as much as I appreciate you telling me that we have higher numbers, the information that I have reviewing is not reflecting that. So what are the numbers? When you say higher numbers, what is...
Well, I meant the higher numbers in 2015. There were other, I can give you examples. In 2015, we had the Best Western that was housing homeless students in Hayrow. We had...
How many?
And, huh?
Can we specify numbers? Do you have data?
I can, I'd have to research that, and I can look that up. I know that also there were hotels in Danvers that we were transporting to and from, Malden, Saugus. Those were very higher numbers in 2015, and they started closing off. Last year, the Best Western was already closed, so that there was less students coming out of that location, also in Danvers. So depending, unfortunately, it's a moving object. At this point, this coming year, we still have the foster students under Title I that have, that previously were not entitled to transportation. After 90 days, at this point, they will be treated in the same way as under McKinney-Vento for the duration that they are in DCF.
I know that here, it says that fiscal year 2017 was not finalized by the time that this was printed. Do we have an idea as to what the cost per rider is today?
I do not have the cost per rider as of today.
Because this is, councilors, this is a very large increase from fiscal year 2011 to today. We're talking about, let me just quickly do the math here. It's a very large number. And why has the cost per rider increased so much? Did we contracted a new transportation company? Why didn't, like, why is the number so high? It's just a very high number.
What we're finding is that there are a lot more singleton cases where we used to be able to pool groups of students at the hotels. You probably have four or five students going to the hotel at the same time. So you were filling a bus, the cost per bus was cheaper when we were contracting for the bus versus individual rider. Now we have a lot more students who are singletons in group homes, foster care locations, in shelters in different communities. So those riders, if it's a bus that you're paying for, you're paying for one child on that bus potentially, not four or five students on the particular bus. So that offsets the cost that you are paying because you're needing to have more additional bus runs to address those needs. And the full cost and increase in your transportation is also an increase in your special education, which is just being revamped for its next five-year run of contracts.
This is, I completely understand the fact that we're probably not maximizing the use of the buses. But if we are gonna list it here as cost per rider, I think we should list it as cost per bus. Because right now, the way that it's being presented, I think is sending the wrong message as to how we're charging for the service. If we were paying for it based on the number of buses that we utilize, it should be presented as number of buses being used, not number of riders. Because here, it's specifying the number of riders. So I know that there's, we're very limited as to what we can do with the school budget, very limited. We're limited completely. But I think it's very important that we had that discussion tonight. I appreciate it. Thank you.
We can get the actual cost and how many students were involved. But about the increase in your transportation account overall, that $656,000 increase, only about half of that is actually due to homeless and the DCF...
Anticipated.
Foster care. The other half of that is an increase that we're going into a new contract for special education transportation, and we have about a two-and-a-half percent increase this year coming forward for our special ed transportation.
Thank you.
About the other 300.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. President. Thank you for your questioning. So this is, this is a cost that the city bears 100% of. Who procures the transportation services? Is it the school department, or is it the city?
For the general ed, we go out to bid for the transportation. We work with a reader in her office here for procurement. But special education, we have gone out to bid in the past. This year, we are not going out to bid because our proposal that came forward to us from our current vendor actually is cheaper than the average that is being paid across the state for the services that we require. So we are putting together a five-year proposal with them. It's a two-and-a-half, two-and-a-half, three, zero, zero. And that is a very low cost compared to what other agencies are now charging, at most of whom at four-and-a-half to 5% per year over the next four years.
And forgive me for going over old territory, but this went out, when was the last time we changed contractors?
We went out to bid five years ago for the special ed transportation.
FY '12?
Two years ago, two years?
This year for...
This past year for general education.
FY '12? Was that when we went out?
Let's see, five, fifteen, yeah. It would've been, yeah, in June, in the spring of '12 we went out.
Because building on what Councilor Vasquez was talking about, I'm looking at FY '12 to FY '13, and $183,000 cost, annual cost, it's on page nine at the bottom. to FY '13, and $183,000 cost, annual cost, it's on page nine at the bottom. That was the big jump. And then it's increased every year since for a total of 392 over the...
But our vendor is not the one who's doing all the transporting for homeless. You have an obligation for homeless transportation that wherever they're living shares the cost with you. So, sometimes it's their provider, and we're paying a portion versus our provider, and they're paying us a portion. Sometimes because the runs are so unique, there isn't a bus run currently available from our providers, and we have to go out and find another entity that will cover that particular bus run because there isn't a bus available for that to happen. So, it's not just a contracted thing. It is a lot of individual cases trying to make it work, given where the child is located and the timing of their schedule for getting to and from school.
And who is our general, not special needs or homeless? Who's our general transportation provider?
NRT bus.
Not running.
NRT bus.
NRT bus. And do they also have any of the other contracts?
They have the special needs contract, and they also won the homeless contract this past fall.
So, they have the clean sweep? They have them all?
We do contract individually for special cases with other smaller companies.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
So, we're going to move on here in a second, but just to wrap up to the Council President and Mr. Abdi's questions, I think. I think what the committee is looking for, I wouldn't go too far away. I think what the committee is looking for is some data for as current as possible. I think the data that's being requested is the number of homeless students that are currently utilizing public transportation to attend Lawrence Public Schools and the costs associated with it. And I think Mr. Vasquez has asked for a different kind of breakdown, rather than cost per rider, it's actually cost per bus is the breakdown. You can provide that to the committee. You can either send it to me, and I could send it out to all, or you can send it to all of us, your preference.
So, we will give you, if we're paying for the bus, we can give you the cost per bus. If we're not paying for it, we'll have to give you a cluster of students that we're sharing the cost for. So, the rates may be a little different depending on whether we're paying for it or whether we're cost sharing. Just so you'll have that information.
And I think we're going to be moving off of transportation here shortly. I wanted to look at the, on page 10 of the budget, the big jump for transportation from FY '17 to FY '18. And just so I'm clear, that's 7.8%. Is that over one year or over the four fiscal years?
One year.
One year?
That's a $656,000, a 7.8%.
So, that's 7.8% that that represents? Okay. Can you, one more time, provides on both of those, the net school spending requirement and the transportation, because those both have gone up substantially, especially the transportation side? Why did that number go up, and is it related to this homeless chart?
The transportation number is going up $656,000 for '21 because of two things. One is the new contract that we're entering into for our special education transportation. So, it's a 2.5% increase for that for the upcoming fiscal year. And then the second is for the expected cost for our foster care children that we are now required to transport within the city if they're more than the mile and a half or from other communities back to our community if indeed this is the location that has been deemed the best educational placement for their stabilization of their education while they're in foster care. So, we've calculated based on how many students we had this year who are awaiting foster care or who are already in the foster system, and we anticipate the cost is going to be roughly $340,000 for busing based on 180 school days, an average of four or five students a day that would be transporting in foster care. Many of others would be then 315,000, 316,000 would be for special education transportation based on our current bus runs.
Who makes the determination that the best, the best case for the child is the, let's have him or her sit on a bus for X number of minutes per day, however long it could possibly be in brought in? Who makes that call?
The way the role is set up is we will have a transportation contact, but ultimately, DCF is the final determiner of whether or not this is the right placement or another location would be the better placement. They do fall into the same guidelines for transportation. No child should be on the bus longer than 60 minutes for normal transit. Can't help traffic every now and then, but 60 minutes is the...
At 45 for K and first grade.
At 45 for younger students.
For the little ones, yeah.
K and...
Did you say we have students from Cambridge? We bus to Lawrence every day? Did you just say that?
Students from Wall fam. We have students from, we used to have Lemonster, Danvers. We have Saugus right now, Malden, Newburyport.
If we're not in agreement, we could go to the department vet and say we think this is unreasonable travel time. So, we've had people down in Randolph and things like that that wanted to transport back and forth, and we thought it was unrealistic.
So, please add to my, to the list of questions, the distance and locations currently where students that we're currently educating and transporting, where are they coming from? You mentioned earlier Danvers and Malden and Saugus and the Best Western in Hayrow. I'm just curious as to, and you said that shifted, it's gone down a little bit, so I'm just curious as to what we're looking at today.
There has been an increase in foster students outside of the city limits. We've seen a lot out of, we've seen a handful just in the last two months out of Lowell, Billrica, Chelmsford. We have quite a few students that have been placed in foster homes there. So, it looks like that piece of it will be increasing.
We're going to move on because we could be here all night, I suspect. Is there anything else in the budget you wanted to highlight?
We did have increases, and we think we mentioned these when we came forward last week for our additional funds that we had requested, that we have increases that we have seen in our special education tuition rates across the state. The average is going up 5% to 10% in tuition for a student we have to place out of the district. Much of that has to do with restructuring applications from the private schools because of some of the new regulations that they have to follow to comply with the state requirements. We're anticipating about a 5% average, which for us is roughly $550,000 worth of additional tuition. We pay roughly now about $11.5 million to $12 million for students we have to outplace for specialized services.
Is this listed at all, so I could follow along in the budget?
It's on the special education...
Special education page.
Which is...
Towards the end.
Okay, now you can just recap that a little bit, now I can actually follow along. So, go ahead. Do I see...
Where's my tuitions?
Page 89.
The purchase services.
So, there is an increase of $1 million in a benefit salaries and stipends under the special education department?
Yes.
That's, okay, so that's significant. So, again, can you, you said it, but now I can follow along a little bit easier.
Okay.
What's the rationale for the million-dollar increase?
The million-dollar increase has to do with the staffing that we needed to maintain services for students. We've had a growing number of special education students. We currently have a little over 2,900 students who are receiving services under an educational program. So, we've had to add additional staff to provide for their program for teaching and for their therapies.
You said 2,900. Where was it before?
We've gone up roughly 175 students this year so far, and we have probably about 150 pending cases that will be resolved within the next few months.
And then one of the things I was mentioning in one of the previous, probably the last meeting, was the expected increase in our student population because of the increases in a variety of different housing projects throughout the city. And we're going to expect this number, I would imagine, you're projecting that to go up as well, and the special education dollars are probably more intense, more expensive than, I'm not sure the right word is, the mainstream students, I guess?
Yes. Services for special education students tend to cost more than the general education student. So, that's why when they do the foundation formula, it's so important to have that data correct because it's a weighted calculation for a student with special education needs or a student who has English language learner needs so that they can provide for additional supports that they would need in accessing their education. So, yes, we anticipate on average about 20% of our population is being serviced under the special education department. So, if you get 100 extra students, chances are probably about 20 of them are going to have some kind of disability that will require services.
Is there anything else you want to highlight in the budget?
I think everything else is just your average increases, our health insurance increases, our contractual obligations were the big pieces.
Open it up to members of the committee if they have any questions. Mr. Abdi?
Thank you, Ms. Loplan. I have three questions, are all cost increases. Utilities and maintenance, why 14.1% this year? What is the driver?
Mr. Abdi?
It's on page 13. It's in the budget summary, last line, 5,200. It's a...
The maintenance budget was grossly underbudgeted, and after reviewing actuals and what needed to be spent to maintain the schools, we reviewed that and needed to make sure that was funded adequately this upcoming year.
Was any thought given to the fact that, I don't mean to be skewering you, you know, I brought it up last week, and I've brought it up before. You know, in the media reports, it seems so easy for us to just do the one-time spending of the $2.5 million. But as we heard in a previous speaker, Mr. Cronin, it's not necessarily something we should be indulging in as a city. And obviously, in FY '19, you can't, you should not be building that in. When we have, well, we don't have a dilemma. The proposal was made, and it's in front of us now, but we have to ask the question, this $2.5 million, we have to look at things like the 14% increase. I see it as taking the opportunity to attack some deferred maintenance or some capital costs as opposed to being underfunded. I just see a 14% increase, and it just catches my eye. Go ahead.
I understand that, but we also, you have to understand that with, for example, snow season, just for the team to go out and get the school yards ready for the kids to come to school, that takes a chunk of our maintenance fee. And last year, it was underfunded, so therefore, this year, rather than repeating that, we wanted to make sure, we looked at actuals, we looked at what does it cost to maintain these buildings. And, you know, 32 schools, 26 buildings, we need to make sure the resources are there for these kids to be able to come to school in a safe manner with, from salting it to heating it, electricity, all of that, we took into account. We looked at the records, the year-to-date reports to make sure that we did, we funded it wisely rather than trying to play catch-up throughout the year.
So, for the next meeting, could I get a breakout of that dollar amount and maybe taking a look at how, what drivers went into that being underfunded and what in FY '18, the 6.13 is paying for?
Yep, absolutely. We'll research that and get it to you.
Some of it, can tell you, some of it was the $5 million cut we had to make last year. So, we cut many of the departments down somewhat and then found that we had to subsidize facilities this year.
And I think that's an important statement. I think the 2.5 million request this year, I think it should be brought to light that that's the first time the school is coming and asking above net school spending. And I think it's important to note that last year, they cut the $5 million out of the budget. And even with the request of the 2.5 million this year, once again, we're going to still have to cut 1.8 million. So, I think that can't be taken lightly. That has to be a point that's heard. And when you see something like that, you need, you're going to see, it jumps out at you, and I understand that, but it's because last year, the $5 million was cut. And again, we need that to be funded in order for the schools to run, and we, that's why we reviewed it and wanted to make sure that we funded appropriately. And it's still a tight budget for that department.
So, through you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that, and what are we going to do next year? I can guarantee you that the city will not have the free cash next, I can't guarantee it.
No, we understand you.
I'm supremely confident that we won't have the free cash next year that we had this year. And certainly, Wall Street would catch note of two years in a row that we are taking capital dollars and giving it to the schools for operating, and that's going to hurt us.
We hear you, and we understand that. And that's why some of these are one-time, one-time costs, the infrastructure for preparing for MCAS tests, as now we have to go online. Again, we've talked about ed supplies getting reduced because everyone are, the students are going more towards online learning tools, for example, Excel Math, such, these types of things were going to be for one-time costs. So, next year, we anticipate we wouldn't see those. And again, we're working hard with the Commonwealth team about the foundation budget. So, we're looking at all avenues to remedy what we can this coming year for the following year.
Knowing that we will have been advised, it's not going to be another year of this that we will have to live within our means.
Mr. Chairman, through you, on page 17, the other driver that caught my attention was understaffing. It dropped down to, you know, we have the educators, we have the people in the classroom, the paraprofessionals, but then we have principals and administration. And we hear a lot in the media reports about how Lawrence Public Schools has cut administration, and there's more people in the classrooms. But yet, I see proposed for FY '18, the increase of 10 principals and administrators on a total of 100. If we pass this budget, it would bring us to a total of 100 administrators and principals, up 10. Whereas, in-school, in-classroom teachers and instructors, an increase of four for a total of 1,182. That seems to contradict what we read in the newspaper, what we read people talking about in the media reports.
So, if I can direct you up above where there says support staff slash exempt, going down 11?
Up into the next box.
In that, right above it, about five or six lines up above it?
Okay, yeah.
Says support staff slash exempt.
Negative 11.
Exempt staff. We used to be, we used to have deans that were exempt staff, but as they negotiated the administrators' union contract this year, the deans now are part of the administrators' association. So, they moved from being exempt to actually being quoted as administrators when we put our budget together.
So, the deans are in the union?
The deans are unionized, they're part of the administrators' association, but prior to that, when the budget was made last year, they were not.
Wow, okay.
So, it's really a wash, it's not an increase. The bodies were there, it's just they were titled exempt in the past because they weren't in a union.
Wow, okay.
So, your increase is really our counselors, therapists, teachers, and some paraprofessionals.
So, system Y, we're looking at a net gain of 12?
Correct. And I'll be honest, most of those are special education.
Yeah, no, I see that. I didn't, I was unaware about the administrators, for lack of a better expression, unionizing.
Well, they are unionized, principals can't be, but assistant principals, supervisors, et cetera, have a union, an administrators' union.
And deans do.
And?
And deans do.
Well, deans are now part of that union. Well, deans are now part of that unit, yes.
For those of us that work in higher ed, it's just strange, in the higher education world.
Yes.
I have no further questions. Thank you very much. Thanks for your patience. Mr. Chairman, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions by members of the committee? We're gonna invite Mr. Giovanni Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, would you please come forward so we can hear your question? If you could just make room for Mr., right over here, right there, yeah, you can take the podium and I wouldn't go too far.
Yes, hello, my name is Giovanni Rodriguez, I'm the city council. I'm the city councillor for District D. And I was wondering about the Gilmet School, the middle school. We have a cut of thirty, three hundred and thirty-three thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. And the Gilmet is in my district, I'm wondering, knowing the needs of that school, and if we reflect the need based on money, I mean, we're cutting money on the school that needs the most help. So can you go through that and can you explain to me that situation, please?
What page was that?
Page fifty.
Yeah. So I'm just trying to page fifty for the other councillors. The loss you see there is that the prior year they had a grant and this year the grant had expired. So it wasn't that Lawrence Public Schools decided to take money from the Gilmet, it was that some schools apply for grants and they get them, they could be for three years, one year, and then when they expire, the grant goes away and that's why we advise them, you know, this is a grant, it's not guaranteed money, the state or federal government has given it to your school. And the Gilmet this year, as of now, the grant hasn't been renewed.
Councilor Rodriguez, if you wouldn't mind just going to the microphone so we could all hear you. Thank you, sir.
Through you, Chair. Is that grant was affecting the purchase of services, which we have two hundred and two thousand on three thousand dollars?
That grant was their extended learning time grant, so yes, it was. A lot of the enrichment services that they purchased or academic software programs for intervention and remediation blocks. And they had some part-time staff that were doing part of that intervention remediation work.
And can you go through the other cuts that we have from the top, the thirty-three thousand, thirty-five thousand dollars, and the twelve thousand, the seventy-eight thousand?
It is all grant-related, so it's all part of the same grant. But they had some staff that were working part-time to do the intervention and remediation blocks as part of their day. So when those people go away, the benefits in their salaries and stipends went away. And then when they no longer have the grant, they're not purchasing the services and they're not buying the additional educational supplies that were funded by the grant in the past.
And do you know if we did any effort in terms of getting the grant back or applying for other grants similar to that?
They are in the process of writing for a new grant, which is a demonstration grant, an exemplary practice grant. So we won't know about that until possibly the fall.
And I have another question through, Chair. The preschool expansion that we have, two million dollars, two hundred and sixty-seven thousand, can you go through that and explain to the public what happened there that we have those cuts?
May I interrupt? What page are you looking?
Page sixteen.
So the preschool expansion grant, we have just received word that they definitely are funded, it is in the, all three versions of the budget. So our second, third year, third year will be funded for next year in the amount of that two million dollars. That is an early intervention, early education and care grant that does a full-day four-year-old program for a hundred and twenty students. We have the fiscal agent, but the money actually goes to community day, community day, no, community day, community group that runs the community daycares because they house sixty-five. And the community group has the other portion and they're running another sixty-five students. So it really funds them, but we're the fiscal conduit for that.
All right, no more questions. Thank you.
You're welcome, Mr. Rodriguez. Thank you very much. Again, so I have no other questions by members of the committee. Is there anything else or are you done with the highlighting of the Lawrence Public Schools?
I think those were the highlights.
Those are the highlights, okay. So just for the charter choice schools, is that gonna be discussed by Mr. Ryanella or by the LPS? Is that, I'm asking right now.
By the way, we can jointly do that, that's fine.
Okay.
I think that's just part of the net school spending calculation, so it's part of the amount in the general fund budget.
What page? And we will not find this in the LPS budget, correct?
Correct.
In the, in your budget book, it's page one ninety, one ninety-two. And so the number that's budget is a hundred and sixty-seven million, five eighty-seven. That's the school department, right. But I think what he's talking, referring to is the choice.
Do you have one that says choice, charter choice?
Nope.
One hundred and ten.
Thank you, thank you. That's probably better.
It's part of the calculation.
No.
Yeah, sure.
So for charter and choice this year, we have seventeen hundred and forty students who are being educated in either charter school.
Say the number again, how many?
One thousand seven hundred and forty.
One thousand seven hundred and forty in charter and?
Charter and choice. So I can break that down. There are sixty-one students who are going to school on school choice, which means they are going to another district who is accepting students into their district.
Does that include the Greater Lawrence Vocational?
No, vocational is a totally separate entity. So this would be, say, Haverhill says I have some seats, I'm welcoming students from other districts to come, and we have students that want to go there, they can go under choice.
Even if they go to Whittier?
Even if what?
Whittier, hypothetically.
Whittier, no, that would be similar to the Volk, right. It would be another public school district they'd be going to. And then we have one thousand six hundred and seventy-nine students who are attending charter schools, most of them here in Lawrence, but we have some that are in Lowell, we have some that are in Malden. Depending on maybe where their family is working, they are attending charter schools somewhere in the state. So for that, those students, the total cost for charter is twenty-two million, one fifty-five, seven twenty-nine, and the city gets back two point three million. So in the budget for next year, nineteen point eight million is being allocated for charter and choice costs.
Where is that number in the budget? Is there a button, is there a number in the budget?
It's not in the budget, it's part of the hundred and sixty-seven nine.
In the packet that the mayor gave you, it's actually broken out in that packet that you have.
Packet that he gave at the last meeting?
Yes.
That was our homework assignment.
I was reading up this one, you're all.
I can send you the slide, so it's easy.
That's okay, I have them, I got them, I got them.
Rough.
Okay, questions by members of the committee? Yes, Mr. Rabi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just from my adification, how is it that where I work determines on what charter school I go to? I always thought charter schools are public schools.
Yes, they are.
And that if you're in Lawrence, you go to Lawrence Charter School. I did know there was, I know there's some special legacy things that if we lived in Lawrence and we moved to wherever, that our kids can finish what they're doing in the charter schools.
Charters are not bound by city boundaries. So actually you can have a student from Athuing attending a charter in Lawrence, I can have a student from Lawrence attending a charter in Lowell. They just have to put themselves into their lotteries wherever they are interested in attending. And different charters have different guidelines for how many students they'll accept from outside of their boundaries.
So these students that you cited in Lowell and a few other places, they lived in Lawrence.
Yes.
They applied for the lottery.
Correct.
In the town of whatever, Lowell.
For that particular charter school.
For that particular charter school. They got accepted, they go there and they take their Lawrence-funded tax money and go to school in Lowell.
Correct. Similar to choice students, when they go, they take their dollars that were allocated for education for them to wherever they are attending.
Wow, okay, thank you. I did not know that.
And is that figure the twelve point five thousand dollars, twelve and a half thousand, what's the dollar amount per student?
I think theirs are a little higher because they actually get dollars towards their facilities, I did a quick calculation. I think, I want to say they're just slightly higher.
Because I think when we last chatted, I think it was between twelve point five.
We're at twelve point three.
Twelve point three.
Yeah.
Well, we're in that ballpark. If you don't have it, I just, just.
Yeah. So if you took the nineteen point eight and divided by the seventeen forty, it would give you their average.
Just to bring some context, I'm curious, out of the sixty-one choice school students, is there a predominant institution where our students are going to if they choose the choice program?
Right now, we have several students who are in Haverhill, who are attending Haverhill.
Haverhill High School or?
Haverhill, actually lower grades. We have a few in Newburyport, we have a couple in Drakeett. So it's, they're really scattered depending on, I guess, family decisions about what works for them.
At the high school level?
Not as many at the high school. Most of them are, well, actually, no, that's not, most of them are actually winding up their years. So they've been there since they were in elementary and they actually are in the ninth, tenth, eleventh grade currently.
All right, I think we're good, councillors, on the, not only on the LPS but also schools and charters, I don't think there's anything else here for education, so I think we're good.
Good.
So thank you so much and we will see you on the thirteenth.
We'll see you again next week, too, I believe.
Oh, very, that's right, that's right, two point five million, that's right. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see you then. Thank you. Let's go to the Greater Lawrence Technical High School.
Hi, good evening. I'm Maria Silva. I'm the school's business administrator, Greater Lawrence Tech. So you guys have your budget binders? I'm gonna be referring to section four, which is our revenues, our proposed revenues for FY eighteen. Good news this year is that overall, budget's gone down for Lawrence. For chapter seventy money, we're receiving twenty-three million, four hundred and seventy thousand, eight hundred and forty-two dollars. The City of Lawrence contribution that's set by the state is one million, forty-nine thousand, nine hundred and nine thousand. And the non-foundation portion of what is set for the City of Lawrence is one million, four hundred and twenty thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, with an overall decrease of forty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars.
I want to stop you right there. I was remiss. We actually had a school committee member here this evening, a school committee member, Pat Mariano. I should have mentioned you earlier. Thank you for coming this evening. I know that you're leaving now, but thank you for all that you're doing on behalf of the students in your district and citywide. So thank you so much for attending tonight.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, I beg, I saw her leaving, I had to make that move. Continue, my apologies for interrupting.
So just overall, letting the city know that your overall budget has decreased forty-four thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars. But your, the students have increased, are projected to increase in FY eighteen with sixty-four students higher. So we're now at a seventy-five point two percent of our students come from the City of Lawrence. And it's due to increase again next year as we have three hundred and twenty-four outgoing seniors and we anticipate getting four hundred, we're taking in four hundred freshmen. So our numbers will continue to increase. And this is mostly due to the increase in students in our school and Whittier is no longer taking school choice. So any of our students are no longer allowed, are being taken at Whittier. So we're trying to increase our numbers to offset the loss of students that are going to the vocational school in Whittier, in Haverhill.
Is there anything else you want to highlight in the budget? If I can find if it is, if you don't have to.
No, just really, I mean, I think the more, just really highlighting where you guys stand as far as what your assessments are gonna be for next year.
Where is, Mr. Ryanella, in our budget, where can we find that? On page one-eleven, I presume?
Page one-eleven is the city's portion of the assessment from GLTS.
And we have two point four million dollars, almost two point five.
Yep, almost two point five million.
That's been reduced?
Yes.
By the, you just mentioned, by the forty, almost forty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Are there any questions or comments by members of the committee? I will ask one question regarding this, because you do have the numbers on here, so you've answered my question regarding enrollment. I know there was, we as a council were part of the funding mechanism by which there is a new addition at the technical school. Because so many of our students from Lawrence go to school there, the predominant number from Lawrence. Can you give us a real brief summary as to where we are on that groundbreaking?
Are you talking about the field project that we have going on?
Talking about the field project, yeah.
Okay, yeah. Our field project actually went, we had a groundbreaking on May seventeenth. This is phase one of our three-phase project. This portion of the project came in just over two million dollars, which we are funding, we have the funding, and it's actually built into next year's budget. Part of it was in this year's budget and one point four million is in next year's budget, which is, which we're using towards phase one of this project. It's due to, the first phase is, football field's gonna be turf field, it's gonna be a new track. And then we're also going to be doing some lighting upgrades in that part of the field.
Repeat that again, what?
Some lighting upgrades, yeah. We're gonna have lighting on the football fields. And then, that's due to complete in September of this year. And then based on our fundraising, we have our fundraising going on right now. Looking to see if we can fundraise so that we can get the money for phase two, which we're hoping if we can obtain enough funding and secure enough funding for phase two, then we'll need to start that phase two piece in the fall. If we're not able to secure all the funding for phase two in the fall, then we won't start until the spring. That phase is also due to be about two point five million dollars. That is going to update a second portion of, it's kind of our practice football field now, which is gonna be all turf as well. And then the softball fields and baseball fields.
So we're looking, go, we're starting now, and then when's the completion date for all three phases? When's this gonna be completed?
We should be completed by the spring or fall of twenty eighteen. Depending if we start in twenty seventeen, in the fall of twenty seventeen, phase two, that will be completed and then phase three will move on to the spring of twenty eighteen. If we have to push phase two to the next spring, then we'll finish next fall.
So we see a lot of construction going on from now until for the next year or so. Any other major capital improvement projects at the school besides that?
We have a capital improvement budget, yes.
Any other big ticket items, any other expansions or anything like that?
No, no, what we have on our capital improvement budget was part of this field project for this fiscal year. For next year, we have some bus that we need, we have fourteen passenger, or fifteen passenger seat buses that our insurance company is looking for us to kind of phase out. So we have that in the budget for next year. We have our phone system that we were paying over the last, well, it's been over the last three years, we still have two more years to pay off on that. That's coming out of our capital improvement fund. And then we have some upgrades in the building that we're looking to do, some masonry work that we're looking to pay with our capital improvement fund.
Great. My last question, it's a stat question, it's a pop quiz. If you don't answer it, that's fine, you can get back to me on it. I've been impressed in recent years about how selective the school has been. Do you happen to have the figures as to the acceptance rate at your institution?
I don't have the exact figure of our acceptance rate. I do know that we have been increasing our student population over the last few years. Right now, we're at fourteen fifty-five as of March first numbers. Next year, you have here, this includes school choice, but fourteen sixty-nine is what we're expected to be for next year. We do have, like I said earlier, we have three hundred and twenty-four outgoing freshmen, seniors and about four hundred incoming freshmen. But we do get around a thousand applicants.
So see, that's what's driving it.
So I guess forty percent of them we're able to take.
You have a thousand applicants and you accept four hundred?
We try to accept around four-ten, four-fifteen because between May through September, some. Mm-hmm. We try to accept around four-ten, four-fifteen because between May through September, some kids move or-
Sure.
Things happen. So we lose kids along the way. But we are trying to maintain about four hundred freshmen every year.
And I'm going to presume out of the thirty-two choice students, those are going to Whittier?
They are at Whittier with the exception of three. There's one at Noshova Tech, one at Minuteman and one at Aspat.
Any other questions for the vocational school? Thank you very much. You've heard, you've heard our, we're going to be back here again on the thirteenth, so-
On the thirteenth, June the two.
Hopefully we'll see you then. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night. Fire department?
Good evening, councilors. How are you? Brian Moriarty, fire chief, Lawrence Fire Department.
Good to see you, fire chief. Very nice presentation at the Memorial Day service the other day. That was very nicely done.
And then I had to leave to serve.
So how can we help you serve on the fire department this year?
I missed what you just said?
We're looking forward to your presentation.
Oh, well, our budget has pretty much stayed the same. We've actually dropped a hundred and two thousand dollars over last year's end number.
Eighty-five, gentlemen.
What we have that is of note is that this year, our changes, although mostly contractual, some going up, some going down. Throughout, at mid-year point, we take on our grant firefighters for a half of the year. So that their, their grant monies expires, expires and we are not sending them on there, packing on their way. We keeping them on, which is good for us. That is the biggest thing we have of note. And that, you would notice, is on page eighty-seven on the top, personal services. You'll see the increase of a hundred and thirty-two thousand.
Is there anything else you want to highlight in the fire department's budget, chief?
No, no, sir. We've, we've maintained our staffing as high as we can, as fast, quickly as we can so that we don't cause undue overtime. We've done very well this year, holding within our budget. And again, at the, at bottom numbers for next year, we're actually a hundred thousand less in the, in our budget request. So we think we're doing a really, running a tight ship.
So I see the numbers on here. Give me the, the body count, if you will, the personnel count.
We have a hundred and twenty-four firefighters positions, including myself.
And that's steady since last year or has it gone up?
The last, well, since the grant started. So we're into, it was on one-seventeen. So the grant started a year and a half ago.
A three-year grant?
Two, two-year, right. Year and a half ago.
So this has been constant for two years, she said, or a year and a half?
The, the grant is a two-year grant that'll end this January. So the numbers will stay at the one-twenty-four.
And we're picking up the money after the second half of the fiscal year?
Correct.
I thought I heard the, the mayor discuss Tower Hill a little bit on their fire station over there.
That is, right now, we have a fire prevention in there.
Okay.
Uh, that's, that's what we've discussed. There's been nothing else.
So that is being utilized for fire prevention?
Correct. That's where the Fire Prevention Bureau had to go when we had to stage Lowell Street. We had to take, empty the basement. We were no longer able to use all those office, all that office space. We opened that, fixed that station up and that's where all the fire prevention people work.
Okay. The union contracts right now, you only have one union or how many unions are there?
We have one union and as the overseer mentioned earlier, we're in negotiations. In fact, I just got an invite today from Mark for our next mediation Monday. So it's, uh, negotiations.
And is the, the contract is expired or is it, you're anticipating the expiration?
It's, it's whether or without a contract now. We're running on what they had.
How long has it been, how long is the contract?
Six months.
Yeah.
So for two years? Okay. Is there any, while we get the chief up here, any questions? And I can circle back, I guess. I just want to give everybody a chance. Mr. Abdi, you said you had a question?
I do if no one else does.
Mr. Pena, yeah?
No.
Okay, Mr. Abdi.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, chief.
Yes.
It said one question and it's with regards to personal services under fire suppression. Line sixty-one on page eighty-four and then again, it's on page eighty-five at the top. There's a decrease in the mayor's budget proposal from FY seventeen approved by a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars. Then at the top of page eighty-five, under administration, there's an increase. So is that one less firefighter and one more administrative staff?
No.
Does that come out in the wash?
That was, that salary personal increase, that's under fire administration. That was, uh, that was- Oh, night, the night differential was incorrect for, and that contractual, that's why it's up. It's contractual night differential for fire prevention people that are in administration.
And that would come out of salaries and wages as opposed to overtime?
Correct.
Okay. And now you're addressing the seventeen thousand-
Correct.
On page eighty-five. Can you address for me what the hundred and fifty-seven thousand decrease means for fire suppression?
What page you want now? The what? The hundred and fifty increase?
Page eighty-four?
Eighty-four.
And line sixty-one, fire suppression, personnel, personal services, and it's a decrease of one hundred and fifty-seven thousand and change? That would seem to be-
That was, uh-
That was the unfilled vacancies, right?
Yeah.
Lost time factor.
Lost time, yeah. That was a lost time factor that Mark has taken out of our, we had two hundred and fifty. Is that what it was, Mark, two hundred and fifty? He's taken a hundred and fifty thousand out of that. And that's why that, when we, the lost time factor is, if there's a vacancy, we haven't had time to fill it. Like right now, I have three vacancies and it's taken us a while to, to fill it. So that money there, that's some of the money that's being taken out. In other words, there's nobody there to actually work it.
So you're filling it with firefighters that'll work overtime?
We're filling it with overtime if we go below the minimums. We have more than twenty-four people assigned to shift and we don't have to hire until we get below that. We've actually been doing pretty good.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Pena?
Yes. Good night, chief. Last year, you replaced a lot of lamps in Broadway. Every lamp's new right now. You remember, I have a-
The lights?
Yeah, lights.
Lights, yeah.
Uh, you have a, you have idea how many lamps you changed in the city this year?
I, I think on, on the Broadway, when I asked Jeff-
I changed everything. It's changed brand-new.
How many did he change? I think when I asked him, there were a hundred and thirty-
You have a plan for, for this year, change more, more lamps?
I'm sure that we will. We put money in for the budget for lights, but that was a money the mayor set aside, did not come straight out of our budget to fix those lamps. That was a project with the mayor and I think there were a hundred and thirty-five that were changed. But we're, the mayor and, and my electricians are working to try to get them all fixed as they, they were also changing them over from the old type light to the new, more efficient light. So they'd get a rebate with it. So it was a better light, less likely to break down and used less electricity. So the DPW and the electric bill was getting a rebate.
Mm-hmm.
And it was kind of a project that way.
Okay. Uh, president?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just for, for the, the lighting. So what we did is that we transitioned from high sodium effi, uh, lighting into LED efficient lighting to be able to save the city-
That's all right.
Money. And we're only able to do that in areas that are city-owned lights. Unfortunately, we cannot do it in, in the neighborhoods because they're currently owned by National Grid, the, the current light bulbs there. But, um, my, my questions go, so this is a question that I will be asking every department head in, in terms of if there's any vacancies currently within your department?
Right now, we have three.
Three vacancies?
Trying to fill them. We're working with civil service to fill them. And I heard you also asked before retirements. We're planning on possibly four retirements next year. So we'll, we'll be working to fill those as soon as they happen.
Uh, where, where are the vacancies? Are they fire suppression or fire administration?
Well, they're firefighters and all firefighters are bid jobs where they work days in fire prevention or shift. That's up to where they bid, but it's all part of the hundred and twenty-four uniform firefighters.
Okay. And, um, and where's their retirement?
I'm sorry?
Their retirement, where's it happening?
It depends if they go. That we, what we count on is who's eligible and has the right age and the years. And we factor in, could they go? Doesn't mean they're gonna.
Okay.
So this year, we factored a, a number of people to go and, and nobody had gone until this week.
Okay. So, um, and I see that we have the seven firefighters. I know it was briefly mentioned, so it's three hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars, but that's because the, this, those were originally covered by the SAFER grant or?
Correct. That's a full year, but we get half of that reimbursed because that's the full year amount. So half of that gets reimbursed from the SAFER grant. We're taking on the other half.
Okay. So that would be only half of the SAFER grant. The SAFER grant is covering the rest of it.
The SAFER grant is covering the first half of the year. When that ends, we pick up the rest of the year.
Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair. I have no further questions. Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much. Mr. President, I'd like to call if you wouldn't mind stepping aside for a second, chief. Mr. Rynello, up, I think this is a good time just to hear a little bit more. I think we get the concept, please, I do, but I just want to hear a little bit more about the, this lost time factor. How frequently will we see it in the budget? Is it just in this place or is it all?
Have it in the police, the large departments, the police department, the fire department and DPW. I believe two fifty in the police, two fifty on the fire and one fifty in DPW. And the concept is, again, on, on page eighty-nine, which has the lost time factor included. You could see the, there's a severance pay line item, which would be if somebody does retire, there's two hundred and ninety-seven thousand budget in that. That's their best guesses who might go. If they don't go, then it's extra money in their budget. So we're trying to, all those vacancies or if somebody does retire, the time it takes to replace that would be several months, going through civil service and filling positions. So it's an educated guess that we're counting on roughly two hundred and fifty thousand out of the roughly ten million in wages that won't be needed. Have a very tight budget this year.
And Mr. Cronin said it was, there was some risk associated with it. He said that going forward with this, while at one level seems very, makes a lot of sense and, but there, it, it, there is a risk. And the risk, I think, is just tying up money that we may not need or use, that we could have been using someplace else, I think, as I understand it.
Yeah, I think what he was explaining was that when budgets are tight like this, there won't be appropriation turnbacks that you normally have counted on, which gives us, which contributes to our free cash every year. So with this budget being very tight, I've already, it's already very tight. There isn't, uh, there isn't a place to count on appropriation turnbacks. The appropriation turnbacks right in the fire department will be two hundred and fifty thousand less than it would have been in the prior year. So in, in that, in that sense, I guess, that's where he was saying there's a, a little bit of a risk involved. We have less, uh, we have less, uh, leeway in this budget to contribute towards next year's free cash.
So, so the bottom line is we'll see this in the major, in the major departments, the larger departments as we go through the process?
Yes, there's just, just three departments.
Thank you, Mr. Rynello. One last, I think, I think one last question for chief on this. You have educated me and your predecessors have always educated me that time in the fire department world is absolutely critical. The amount of time it takes to get from the fire station or wherever the fire trucks are to the location where the emergency is taking place, time matters. Can you tell me what we're dealing with right now with respect to time? What's our numbers as respect to once a call is taken and how long it takes for us to respond?
In our last report to the state fire marshal's office, it came up with an average, um, our average response time was approximately four minutes.
What's the average time? What's the acceptable time in the common?
Four for the, four to six minutes for the first fi, fire company to arrive and within fifteen for a full assignment to get there. And we're well within the fifteen for the full fifteen minutes to get there. Eight, with eight minutes for the fifteen firefighters to get there. Excuse me, I had my numbers backwards. In other words, four minutes for the first company to arrive and attack the fire or open the airway, should it be a medical emergency. And then within eight minutes, your full first alarm assignment should be there, which in NFPA consists of fifteen firefighters.
So that's the first step because I think that's the ultimate, is me getting, getting there on time.
Correct.
On the flip side of that, in the fire department, the second part of this equation is your personnel, their personal safety, their equipment, their abilities to perform their duties and minimize the risks associated with it. How are we doing as a department to make sure they, that their risks are as minimized as possible as they take the dangerous craft of, of, of being guardians in our city?
Well, in the last two years, I think we've gone, uh, made some great strides in improving that. One is going to happen tomorrow morning. I'm leaving at four o'clock in the morning for Pennsylvania to go down and do our final inspection on our new ladder truck. We just, May first, started all one hundred percent brand-new SCBA's for every firefighter due to a grant that, that my lieutenant, Macaron, was so awesome to write and be excited about. We also have a grant for an engine company that is being built and it'll be ready, should be July nineteenth. They should be going down there for that final inspection. You yourselves and the mayor, last year, in the capital improvement plant, bought us a, a new pump for, last year. So in this two and a half year timeframe, we're going to get a new ladder, two new pumps, all new air packs. We've gotten the seven firefighters with grants. We've worked diligently to improve the equipment that the firefighters have. I've outfitted, been able to improve their tactics and strategy. I've changed our alarm card so that we have a three-in-one alarm card for every alarm that responds to the city. So it was, what I thought when I got here, a little scattered. And when a deputy called for another alarm, he might get one or two trucks and, and everybody would be a while getting here. So now I've changed it. So every time we strike an alarm, we get three pumps and a ladder. So three pumps and a ladder come to cover our city. And then if we strike another alarm, they go to the fire and then another three pumps and a ladder come to cover our city. So should another fire start, they'll still have the adequate staffing to show up at another fire. We've improved our equipment so that our water supply is far greater. The water department has done a wonderful job improving water supply throughout the city. But we also, in the fire department, have upgraded all our supply lines. And now we, on all our pumps, carry five-inch hose, which may not mean much to the layperson. But I can tell you that we had a fire yesterday after the Memorial Day program. And sometimes some of the greatest things you get are afterwards from your employees when they, they say, wow, you know, it really did make a difference. Because you knew all along what you're doing was the right thing, but until they actually have buy-in, you don't necessarily think you've succeeded. Well, I got an email from a firefighter today who laid an exceptionally long line yesterday from a ladder truck to a hydrant down by the projects. And it was a good eight-hundred-foot lay where in the past, after three hundred feet, we would have to get another pump in there to, to boost the pressure and keep it pumping. He did that all by himself with the one truck all the way to the ladder truck, which then resupplied the, the ladder pipe. And we had more than enough pressure from that hydrant and that water. So we've improved that. All our trucks now are set up the same. They all have the same supply line. They all have the same attack two-and-a-half inches, three-quarters. They all have a blitz gun. So we've dramatically improved that. We've got multi-gas, five gas meters on every truck now. I've improved the water rescue abilities where we have a, a new boat for the, below the dam, which is full of rocks and, and fire dangerous, more dangerous. We have prop protectors on the boats now that we didn't have before. Turnout gear. We, we're working to improve that all the time, trying to make sure that every firefighter has two sets of turnout gear that is in good shape and it can be cleaned. We've improved extractor, extractors. We have one at Central. We have one at Park Street. We have one at South Broadway. So that after a fire, the firefighters can wash their gear and get the carcinogens out of it and say clean. So that in the long term, the firefighter will live longer as the smoke and toxins are far more dangerous now than they were years ago. So as far as what are we doing to improve our safety and improve our response and, and, and make ourselves more efficient, I think we're far more efficient. Yesterday's fire- more efficient, I think we're far more efficient. Yesterday's fire, um, was a rather large fire, heavy volume of fire, and we had two two-and-a-half's, a blitz gun, and a ladder pipe operating in one area within just a few short minutes. And it's due to new equipment, good firefighters, well-trained, and, and out of there to work. Um, so I think you should be very pleased with, with how that's working.
When's the last time we had a brownout?
We haven't had one since I've been here.
What has been the, uh, how, how has our community, um, relationships been? There was a time not so far along ago where there was a real schism and conflict between many members of our community and the fire department. Uh, there was lack of trust, and there was, there was some real hostility. Can, has, have those things been mended over the course of time?
Well, I haven't seen them. Um, so I'd have to say yes. I go to all the neighborhood meetings. I go to all the events that happen in the city. I shouldn't say all, because occasionally I have to miss one, but I try to go to as many as I can. I greet, talk to people all the time. We, the trucks participate in, uh, neighborhood events that happen. We, uh, are very well-mixed in the department. I have many, uh, Latino firefighters who were out and speaking at groups and, and talking and telling, telling me things that are going on. I've had very few complaints in the three years that I've been here. One or two of any substance that, that I had to deal with. Um, I, I think we get along quite well with the community. I hope that it, it works well. There are open doors anytime. They're all invited anytime they want to come in and, and look around, uh, take a tour, ask anything they want. We try to participate in all the programs that make the city be- better. I've worked to have needle boxes on all the trucks. We have needle collection points at the station. We will collect them, um, work with the police department to help get them set up as well in the EMS system, so that we, we have a far more efficient EMS system in the city now, I believe. Um, I think we're all doing the right things in the right time.
And my last question, and I want to recognize some of the audience. My last question is, is can you talk a little bit about where we are right now with respect to mutual aid? Uh, are we, how are we trending at this point? Are we still a net recipient? Are we exporting mutual aid?
I, I think we're do, we're doing a little bit of both. Um, we, we do get mutual aid a lot. If we have a work in fire, we have at least one company and over is, is always come to our aid and help cover our city. Um, we go to a second alarm, we get, uh, many more. Um, but we provide it a lot, too. We, we provide a pump and a ladder to anybody who needs it. And we've been, uh, recently to Haverhill, Andover, Methuen, um, North Andover. And, and if my, our companies go, I go as well, offer any assistance I can to their, their chief and their, their company officers, and, and ours, our firefighters, and, and work right alongside. So I think we, we do our fair share. We collect quite a bit, but we give it out as well.
Okay. Thank you. If it's all right with you, Chief, I asked you to step aside for a second. Lieutenant Macaron, would you please come up? Lieutenant Macaron, I'm gonna put you on the spot, and hopefully I'm gonna apologize beforehand, but I'm sick and tired of having to listen to every chief come up here and say great things about you.
Oh, I'm gonna try.
Time and time again, I think I've seen four or five chiefs, and every one, to a man, has said what a great job you're doing for the city in trying to provide the funding source and doing grants. So kudos to you. I wanted to publicly acknowledge that, because again, Chief, this evening, looked to your direction and talked about the great work that you're doing. And, uh, oftentimes, you're behind the scenes, but I wanted you to come up in front of the scene, and I wanted you to publicly take that compliment. And thank you so much for all that you're doing for our city.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the fire department this evening? We're gonna move on to electrical if, if we are good with that.
Why don't you show a comment here? Or actually, a, a, a big request.
Sure.
Aim Street.
Pardon me?
Aim Street, the fire station on Aim Street.
Yes, there is one there. It's where fire prevention is.
Yes. Uh, when would it be functional in terms of?
If you give me another million dollars in a budget, that's what it would cost for staffing a year.
Okay.
Uh, and I don't be, say that to be.
No, no, and I completely agree with you.
You know?
I think it's necessary.
Cost another million dollars to staff that, the same as I would staff an, uh, another fire pump anywhere else in the city. Um, it takes staffing to do that.
How, how, what's the staffing requirement?
Uh, I would need four officers and, uh, three, twelve firefighters, so that minimum of four people per shift, an officer and three firefighters. Of those officers, one's a captain and three lieutenants.
All right. Thank you very much, Chief.
Yes, sir.
All right. Uh, we're gonna move on now to electrical inspection. I believe that's on page ninety-four. Chief?
Sir. My electrical inspector, one-man department.
[laughing]
He does, he does an awesome job. He also comes out to our fires for, help us, he was there yesterday, help us trying to determine causes electrically. Um, he brings in far more than he costs.
So this is one part of the department that in the neighborhood meetings, there's always one question that deals with the traffic signal.
That's not him.
That's not him.
Not that. That's not him. This is the electrical inspector on page ninety-four.
So, who does the, the traffic signal?
That's my, uh, in fire alarm, my electricians.
All right.
Superintendent of fire alarm. And that's on page?
Ninety-one. Ninety, ninety-one.
Ninety-two?
Ninety.
Ninety?
All right. I have no questions on electrical inspections. I'm gonna go back to fire alarm in a second. Any questions on the, uh, no, wait. There's a lot of burning questions here on the electrical inspections. Anybody?
Any questions?
Apparently not. Mr. President, I think, okay. Can we go to fire alarm then?
Fire alarm. There we, uh, had, we added money for repair maintenance of our traffic lights, because we have aged traffic lights. But a lot of our chapter ninety money is, is, uh, replacing intersections quite a bit, but what was your question?
[laughing] Sure. Uh, so during the neighborhood meetings that you frequent, uh, it's inevitable. There's all, is always seemingly one question from the audience. What about this traffic signal? This doesn't seem to be working. The lights don't seem to be working fine. They need to be recalibrated, or we have a walk signal or a flashing walk thing.
All that.
It's always seems like, there's always a, um, a question regarding that. And, and usually, at least the responses that I can recall is, is oftentimes budgetary. We have very few people doing it. Um, they're busier than one on paper hangers, and they don't have the opportunity to do as much as they possibly would like to do. But, so I wanted to ask you about, do we have enough resources in that section to take care of the, this, the, the fire alarm component of your department?
Right. Well, it's, it's called fire alarm because they're also under the fire, the dispatching center, but we got rid of the actual fire alarm. So the three of them work on the lighting and the traffic lights. So, and we did add to their budget this year eleven thousand dollars.
How much?
Eleven.
How much?
Eleven material supplies, the bottom line, page ninety.
Yep.
Um, to improve that. And, and all you said is true. That is what they say at all these meetings. And I go back and I call them, and they head out there and they fix it and repair it. A lot, many times, people call and say the lights are blinking, and that's the failsafe, so that they, it's a legal signal when a computer goes in that, that it's not working properly, or the si- signal fails. It goes into a blinking system, so that somebody has to stop and somebody has to slow it on, or maybe they all stop. Um, and I send them out and they, they re-fix them and they recalibrate the computers if it's a computer. The hard part is many of them are the old rotary. It's a, believe it or not, it's a, it's a rotary clock that spins around, and the timer clicks, and that's what changes the, the light. And those are very old, and the pots are, they're salvaging old broken ones to fix, older broken ones. Um, and as we get money to replace them, as chapter ninety improves the intersections, they go to the more modernized computer ones. Um, and I tell you model numbers, but I don't know. I just know that they're getting better.
Mr. Rabbit?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm responsible for several of the gray hairs on the chief's head.
All right.
Because I've got the two signals, Salem and Newton.
Mm-hmm.
And South Broadway, Mount Vernon. Are those?
Old.
Yes, they are. I, that's where I learned from you about the rotary dial. And every time a car hits them, and I don't know what's with those boxes attracting car accidents.
Yeah. It's like a magnet, isn't it?
Jeez.
And if they don't have insurance, then, then it's even harder to get fixed. If they have insurance, then we build the insurance company, and they, and then we end up getting a new one, which actually kinda is a, a good thing.
We get the new digital ones, the new orb?
Yeah, new computer boxes instead of rotary. So, um, those are old, and they're doing what they can to keep them upgraded. Um, they, we have given the, the city planner, Treats Park's office, all the list and the mayor, the list of all the intersections and the age of the device that's there, and whether it's rotary or computer. And they are trying to make a priority list as to, to repair them all and make a plan. Um, I don't have a, that in front of me.
We'll get that out of Mr. Rynello a little later. Because I believe that the mayor's got a million dollars. Set aside for that. Um, so actually, and that takes it away. So I, I now no longer have any questions, because I, I will say for the record, those two lights, I know you and I have had multiple conversations regarding them, but, but that's, they tend to be frequent concerns of citizens.
I have one intersection for the chief.
Council President, feel free to mention it.
Thank you. Broadway and Park Street.
Mm-hmm. Broadway and Park. Any particular thing about it that you want me to tell them?
Oh, the, the light is not, it's flashing right now.
It has been.
According to a text that I received from a resident.
Well, we have a number we can call and get that fixed. I didn't know it was flashing. That's not usually a trouble one. That, that one usually works.
Yeah.
As soon as I leave here, I'll call them.
All right. I appreciate it.
Mr. Rabbit likes to, uh, Paul up?
Paul, kidding aside, why are traffic signals typically, typically with the fire department?
It's not unusual.
Why is it with you?
It's not unusual, and I don't know how it originally happened. I'm sure there's some history somewhere. But we had the fire alarm, and, and it probably had to do with the old game well system, the line boxes, and they always had to, the telephone lines were out there where they, we were working on the, the system and, and the circuits, and they ran the lines in the same place, and it probably just get, you know, blended in there somewhere. I don't really know how, but we aren't the only one. It was the same in Haverhill. We did take care of the traffic lights. I've seen it in other towns doing the same thing. And it, it's one of those weird things that, to the fire chief enough to answer about traffic lights, you don't really think about when you're on the fire truck.
Yeah.
Here, Paul says here, it just got kinda pushed on us, but.
Police stumped it on us.
The police?
Police stumped it on you.
I just gave you credit, and you can't be serious.
Oh, I did. There was a history. You go back forty years ago, and it wasn't having any traffic lights in the city, and the police couldn't handle them, so.
Hey, no, we can't hear you, Lieutenant Macaron.
Here's the history.
There was history with it. About forty years ago and change, the police had them. How many traffic lights were in a city? A dozen. They couldn't handle them. So they gave it to the, uh, fire alarm division. They gave them a stipend because they had equipment. Any traffic lights, they get, um, they get, they get called in for, they don't get overtime. They just have to come in because they get a small stipend, and they agreed to it. And they're stuck with that. Here we have forty years later, and that's dumped on them still, with no funding to repair them. That's why at least eleven thousand dollars moves a little bit toward it.
Okay. No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Uh, I wanna talk about water pressure, but that's probably a water department question for the hydrants. Is that a DPW?
Well, that's who would fix it.
So is that under you or your department or under the water?
It would be the water department.
Water department. So they're, they're next, so I can ask them that question. Uh, my last question is, I'm gonna be harping on this, and already my colleagues are tired of me, but I'm sorry. So here is the list of new major developments that are gonna be cropping up in the city of Lawrence. Van Brody Mill, hundred and one units end of two thousand nine. Five Franklin Street, two hundred and seventy-six units. Uh, that started in, uh, June of two thousand eight and is completed two thousand nineteen, uh, two thousand eighteen, and completed two thousand nineteen. Monarch's Lofts, phase two, sixty-four units, end of this year. Pacific Mills, phase three, three hundred Canal Street, hundred and forty-five units, end of two thousand eighteen. Newark Paper, two hundred and fifty units, end of two thousand eighteen. Pacific Mills, phase one and two, three hundred Canal Street, hundred and sixty-nine units, and, uh, that should be completed by the end of this month, uh, or end of June. A Union Crossing, phase two, completed, there was seventy-three units, end of two thousand sixteen. Now, I'm looking at these numbers, and these are mostly big, old mill developments. And when I think of old mill developments, I think of the, I think of the, the, the fire that took place in Malden Mills, that you're very familiar with, uh, years ago, and how devastating that was, and really devastated an entire neighborhood. Um, are we prepared, as a fire department, to deal with the, what I consider to be a significant inflow of new apartment buildings at old mill sites?
Well, it's a double-edged sword. When they, we have these old mills, and they're in rough shape right now, and, and quite honestly, many times, regardless of whether they're a good company, bad company, clean or not, a mill fire is a scary thing. Um, the good part about all this project work, from my point of view, is that they are now putting all new sprinkler systems in. They're more compartmentalizing the unit space, because they're not wide open in industrial commercial space with a lot of combustibles. They, and when they are now compartment, compartmentalized, they have a much better sprinkler system now because it's all new. The, so that's the end result, which is good. The, the hard part is during construction, uh, having them do that in a safe manner. Uh, in the past, they've been allowed to rip sprinkler systems out completely, and I won't let them do that. Um, I've let them take out up to two floors at a time, and they have to work around that so that we could still fight a fire in a building that is under construction when it's, it's at its most vulnerable, a mess, combustibles everywhere, um, and have some chance of saving it and the buildings around it. Um, some of the contractors have not been very happy with my demands, but that's, I get to play that role. Um, they've worked around it, and they've been successful. The, the end result is that we've had very nice, uh, some very nice mills turned into very nice residences that I, uh, feel far more comfortable fighting a fire in now with a brand-new sprinkler system and far more, uh, commen, com, I'm having trouble with that word tonight, compartmentalized. But there will be fires in these buildings. They, they may not be gigantic fires, but there, there will be fires. There'll be people that'll have smoking in bed. There'll be, um, playing with kids, playing with matches. There'll be people who will cook and leave it unattended. So we will be going to these buildings. And there'll be more people in these buildings now than there have been, because some of them have been abandoned. So it is gonna increase our responses. We are gonna have more medical emergencies there. We're gonna be there a lot. It will be a draw, a draw on public safety, police, fire, EMS. Um, so that is a concern. So when, when we look at these plans and we review them, we also look at access and how we can get in there, how we can, you know, get better, get to these equip, uh, buildings faster, tie into the sprinkler systems, um, shut them down. Because when we have a fire in the seventh floor of one of these mill buildings and the sprinkler activates, it's great. It puts out the fire, but now the water very quickly causes damage all the way down, um, every apartment below. So we need to be able to get in, be sure the fire is out and shut the, shut the sprinkler system off before the damage gets any worse. Um, but I feel good as a fire chief in the end result when these have new sprinkler systems. They've done really well, and, and I feel far safer than just an open, empty building.
Great. Thank you. I don't have any other questions on fire alarm. More for the chief or Mr. If anybody else does. If not, we will thank you, Chief. I think that you're, that was the last section. Uh, we appreciate. We will, uh, see you perhaps next Tuesday.
Oh, yes.
And then the following Tuesday as well.
Yes, sir.
So thank you so much.
You.
Water and sewer?
Chairman, councilors. My name is Daniel Leyhiff. I am the supervisor at One Short Department. The proposed budget is a budget of eighteen million, seven hundred and ninety-three thousand, two hundred and eleven dollars. It is a, uh, increase of approximately six hundred and seventy-two thousand, six hundred and three thousand. Um, the increase for that is primarily due to debt service, approximately eight hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. But it also is a increase due to the minimal, uh, staffing contractual increases that we had to do as well. But, um, other than that, as instructed, we pretty much, uh, level funded the budget across the board.
One eighty-three.
One eighty-three. So this is where I get a little more parochial, and I put my district counselor hat on. Um, we've had a lot of issues, uh, in my district and District F, not only in the neighborhood that I live in, but also... Not only in the neighborhood that I live in, but also in other parts of South Lawrence East with the water quality. Um, we talked a little bit about the proposed work that's going to be done to improve the, uh, water quality. Um, my neighborhood, but I'm guessing others are impacted.
Sure. As the, as the chief alluded to, uh, earlier, the city has spent, I think right now they've bonded approximately sixty million dollars in reference to infrastructure improvements. Uh, the area you're talking about, Colonial Heights area, is actually, uh, next contract going out, Contract Two, which is about a nine million dollar project. Uh, there should be shovels in the ground. We hope that they're ready by the end of August. Um, the plans have been sent to the DEP, I believe, last Thursday. So as you know, the process is you have to get their approval. Funding is already in place, but we just have to, um, put it out for bid, and we should be taking action relatively quick on that. Um, we have other areas throughout the city we're doing right now. Amherst Street area that we're doing sewer improvements as well. New pump station on Pembroke Street, which is going very well. So, uh, the city is, is absolutely taking the right steps over the last, um, eight to ten years in increasing pressures and flows and also increasing increased capacity. So they're doing a good job.
I was told, uh, I was meeting neighbors on Bailey Street over the weekend, and they were telling me that there's, they got postcards saying that they were going to have water stuff, but then I got some conflicting information. Do you know if there's any work being done in the next week or two along that section, Bailey, Abbott, near around there?
There's going to be some lining done there, some sewer work there, uh, in between Bailey and an alleyway. Um, I'm, I'm not sure. Did it say water improvements or water or sewer?
Yeah, it was unclear from the, from the residents. It was water or sewer or both, but it was certainly within that.
Sure.
Rubric.
There is some improvements planned for cleaning and lining over there.
Afterwards, can you send me the information as far, I'm, I'm very interested in knowing. I'm sure every council, who's a district council will want to know exactly what's going on in their district, but I, I am as well. Can you send me the schedule of work that you anticipate seeing for the ne, for the remainder of this calendar year?
Sure. There's actually some on the, on the website.
Okay.
Right now. There is some updated, uh, projects that are out there.
And it has scheduled dates on there as well?
I believe there is, yeah. There's an, there's an outline as to, um, when the work is going to be done.
Okay. I, I will look that up. Do me, if, if you'd do me a favor as well, just to pulse the suspenders, if you wouldn't mind sending me that link. I'd appreciate it. I could take it from there. But I will look it up as well. Um, let's open up for questions or comments from members of the committee, and I can swing back later. Anybody else have comments or questions? Water and/or sewer? Uh, we talked about potential increases today with the overseer. He said that the, they haven't had rates increase in, since two thousand and nine. Uh, are you expecting any rate increases coming up in the next calendar, next fiscal year?
I don't believe there'll be any this coming fiscal year, no. Um, the city is, there are programs out there that you're familiar with, the SRF projects. Um, this is something that from year to year, the city evaluates through a performance evaluation form that is filed. And as a result of those, those, those forms, uh, the city is notified as to whether or not their, their, uh, potential fundings will be available. But of course, this is something that, you know, we have to sit down and go over and see the cost and extrapolate out what the increase may be over the next handful of years.
So are you unequivocally saying there's not going to be an increase for the next fiscal year? Or are you, are you equivocating it just a little bit?
I would say that unequivocally. I would say there's, there's no rate increase this year, no.
All right. Thank you. Going once, going twice. Questions, comments for the water department, water and sewer? Last thing I'm going to try to find is if there's any major, major changes, uh, in the delta. Uh, see increases in salary in the water department. That's probably one position potentially, presuming.
Yes, we eliminated the pump operator's position, and we are requesting to, to fill it with an MEO Grade Three. Uh, we're picking up the cost, uh, for the city engineer position as well.
Say that again. You're picking up the cost for the city engineer?
I'm sorry. Half the cost for the city engineer.
Okay.
But other than that, everything else is contractual. I did.
Do you have any openings right now in the, in water and sewer departments?
There is, well, technically, there's two openings. There is the, the sewer, Board of Sewer Commissioner.
Yep.
Is open as well as.
How long has that been open? It seems like it's been open for a while.
I believe it's going on ten months since Brian Pena left.
So we're having, apparently, we're having a hard time filling that position, or else it would have been filled by now. What's, seems to be the obstacle? Do you know? Why aren't we able to hire a water and sewer commissioner? Seems like an important position.
Well, I've taken the reins since, since August, and, um, I don't know, uh, what the next steps are going to be, frankly.
You're still taking applications? Or is the application still open?
As far as I know, it's still open.
Probably have their conversation to have with the mayor then, and probably with you. So I'll save that for him. All right. No other questions? Thank you very much, Mr. Laniff. We appreciate it. Uh, we'll see you in a couple weeks?
Sure.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Ryanello, you're the last man standing. And with that comes the following. Other Human Resources Services, the mayor's office. So what, do you want to start off with other human resources or services?
Other human services, I believe, is in, um, it's on page one fifty-three.
Okay.
I believe these are, uh, there's a couple of contracts that we have with Trauma Intervention Program, and then there's an elderly health program for thirty thousand. It's no increase in either of those line items anticipated, um, or budgeted for.
So just to be clear, does that include the Human Rights Commission?
That's just the Human Assistance Programs on page one fifty-three of those two contracts. Then on the next page, there's fifteen hundred dollars allocated to the Human Rights Commission.
Just so we're clear.
That's it.
There are two programs that we're providing funding to. Well, this is interesting. So we have the TIP program.
Yep.
Trauma Intervention Program for some of five thousand. It was zero funded for many years. And so, uh, we've decided to level fund it?
I think it was funded, it's, it was funded in FY seventeen. Um, I'm not sure if it was, uh, I don't have my prior year budget, but it may have been funded in FY sixteen, but we just didn't pay it out.
And the other one is elderly health.
Elderly health.
What does that mean?
We pay that out every year.
What is it? What is it?
Uh, it's, it's, uh, some elderly health program. I think Martha Velez can best speak about it. But it's, I believe it was, it's with, um, uh, Human Service Agency that provides health services to the elderly.
And on the Human Rights Commission, it's my understanding that they're going to be sharing some clerical assistance?
I think they're, uh, the plan in this budget is, uh, is to provide some extra, uh, staffing. Uh, I believe there's one in the Recreation Division, which will be halftime for recreation and halftime, to provide some of these, uh, uh, non-paid boards, some support help.
And of course, will that include the, uh, the Cibility Commission?
Uh, that would include the.
My understanding was it was going to have the Human Rights.
Yeah, all of the, uh, I think the only ones that have support now are, the Planning Board has some support through the Planning Department. Uh, the Licensing Board has a Licensing Clerk, and the rest of them don't have anybody.
Questions, comments on this, gentlemen? I think we're good on that. Thank you. So let's, uh, mayor's office?
And the mayor's office, um, very few changes to the mayor's budget. There was one, one change of note, and that was the, uh, there's a membership to the Mass Municipal Association, which was in the city council's budget, um, but we moved that over to the mayor's budget. So that's the increase in the mayor's, uh, pretty much the only increase in the mayor's budget was the ten thousand, nine hundred for dues and memberships. Everything else is level funded.
Okay. Um, okay. Any questions on the mayor's office?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Abdou.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Ryanello, where the mayor's office constantly is rotating every several years, depending on elections, do people actually qualify for longevity in the mayor's office?
Uh, well, uh, per ordinance, I believe so. Um, uh, if you've been here five years or more, uh, you would be eligible for longevity. So I'm not sure, um.
Eighteen hundred dollars.
Eighteen hundred dollars in here. There was nine hundred there last year. Uh, so I think that's the, I don't know if it's the mayor or chief of staff or one of his aides, but, um, it is per ordinance. And I just noticed it hasn't been paid out in the past.
It's, it's really, you know, nothing's trivial in Lawrence, but, um, I know in years past, a few administrations ago, not the last one, um, well, at least I'm not aware of the last one, but there were large longevity payments due, and it became a sticking point, and I thought that, that was done away with.
Uh, we, you know, uh, I, I'm not familiar with it, but, uh.
It was during my hiatus when I was out in the wilderness, so I, I don't.
Uh, you know, certainly the, uh, the ordinances, uh, there is an ordinance that says if somebody has more than five years of service, they get, there's a schedule of what they get for longevity. Um.
Thank you, Mr. Ryanello. Mr. Chairman, I have no further questions regarding the mayor's budget. Okay. Uh, some other questions on the mayor's budget. We can thank you, Mr. Ryanello.
Welcome.
Appreciate that. Do you want to hang around for the city council budget? It's very exciting. Um, Mr. President, do you want to present our budget?
Sure. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. So the city council budget is seeing some changes, but it remains level funded. There's a three-dollar difference, but, uh, that was more for procedural purposes there. Na, nothing mayor. Um, so as you can see, the, the big changes here are that, um, in fiscal two thousand and seventeen, we had budgeted for the confidential secretary at a salary of fifty-five thousand dollars. That has been reduced, um, by nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars due to the, the compensation that our current confidential secretary is receiving. Uh, so now, um, we, we adjusted that to reflect what her salary currently is. Um, when you look at the minute-taker community liaison, uh, there's an increase of nine thousand, twenty dollars. Uh, the intention behind this is that we, since we have that saving opportunity of nine thousand dollars with the difference in salary for the confidential secretary, we could add a part-time, uh, position to the office of the city council for minute takers and, uh, for an individual to do the follow-ups, particularly, um, in, in community-related, uh, purposes. So oftentimes, uh, we have to contact, um, you know, transfer vendor license petitioners or, uh, you know, the food trucks vendors and whatnot. Um, and we have to do a lot of follow-up with them, uh, also with the, um, you know, anything that, that it's involving directly, uh, community contact, uh, as well as participating in possibly, um, uh, community fairs that exist or attending, uh, if possible, when we are unable to, any neighborhood groups. So this will be a person that will work, uh, part-time for the office of the city council, uh, and it will be an eighteen-hour, uh, position. That way, we will not be mandated to pay any benefits, uh, to the, to this particular individual. Uh, now, when we go to, so that's under personal services. Um, when we go to purchase services, or, or the severance pay here, uh, finally, under personal services, severance pay, um, last year, we had approved twenty-nine thousand dollars, uh, for the retirement of our former confidential secretary, which, um, we are able to, to keep, but utilize in other areas of our budget. So under purchase of services, we see an, uh, eight thousand, five hundred dollar increase, which is the, the, um, clear golf or the opportunity to have, uh, financial transparency. Um, and that will, that, that was the cost that was provided to us, uh, for, for this particular service. Uh, under professional services, I am adding ninety-six hundred dollars for the opportunity to have a Spanish interpreter in city council meetings. In, and under supplies, operating supplies, we have discretionary amount, an additional seventy thousand dollars for discretionary expenses, uh, that will include, um, the, the enhancement of our sound system. Uh, we have had the opportunity to, uh, receive headsets for individuals who have difficulty hearing, but we only have three right now. Uh, the way that we will be utilizing those is with disposable, uh, headsets because it will be a cost savings for us, uh, rather than having to, uh, get them sanitized, uh, on a constant basis. Uh, so we will, we will have the opportunity to purchase disposable devices, uh, and/or make any, uh, necessary repairs, um, within our offices. Um, we, we have to purchase conference room tables and chairs, uh, and, and equipment that we don't necessarily currently have today. And finally, under dues or memberships, you see a decrease of eight thousand dollars, uh, one hundred and three, which is, uh, we have left there two thousand, five hundred dollars if any councilors ever wants to participate in any of the conferences, such as the, uh, the Massachusetts Municipal Association Annual Conference that happens. Uh, that has been the average of money that we spent, uh, to attend the conference per, per, uh, throughout the, the last couple of years. But I think that we shouldn't be paying for the, the ten thousand dollar fee, annual fee, uh, to be a member. The, the mayor's office is taking on that role, uh, and we will not be paying for that membership fee on an annual basis because we're not maximizing it as a body. Uh, only some of us are attending the conference on an annual basis. So I think we should budget only what we, what we'd like it to use and not, uh, the full amount. So now I open the floor to any questions.
Mr. Abdou.
Counselor Abdou.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. President?
Yes.
The ninety-six hundred dollars are for professional services. How is this ever going to be implemented, considering the number of subcommittees we have and the length that some of these meetings go? And how will we speak and it be translated and come back for what seems like a paltry sum for, I, I, I have engaged these in my daytime job, and, you know, I don't know what you're going to get for ninety-six hundred dollars.
Yeah. So I've had the opportunity to speak to, um, several, uh, interpreting companies. What you will do is that they will come in and they will only provide services for, uh, the amount of time that they're here. Uh, they do have a minimum payment of one hour that they will, we will have to pay them, even if they're not here for the full amount. Uh, the way it will work is that they will only charge for the, for the amount of time that they're here, uh, during meeting hours. Uh, my intention is to have it originally for the full council, so we budgeted if I don't, if I, Mr. Ryanello, I don't know if you remember exact, the exact amount of meetings that we budgeted for. Uh, we are scheduled to have twenty-four meetings in the full council annually, uh, based on the city charter. Uh, and we average it out on twenty-four, uh, on four hours per meeting, if I recall correctly. Um, we usually don't go for four hours every night. We usually go for about three, two and a half, two and, two and a half to three hours, but we budgeted for four hours instead, and, and we added an additional ten meetings, uh, to be on the safe side. So we're budgeting for four hours per meeting, and we included an additional ten meetings per, per year as part of the ninety-six hundred dollars.
And these are three reputable OSD-approved, Commonwealth-approved.
They are.
Vendors.
They are. So we will then have to pick whichever-
They'll do a one-hour minimum.
We have to pay them for a one-hour minimum. So, let's say if the meeting were to be thirty-seven minutes long, we will have to pay for one full hour. Similar to what we do right now with our minute takers. So our minute takers, if they come in for a thirty-three-minute meeting, we have to pay for the full amount of one hour.
And are we providing this for Spanish speakers or other speakers, Vietnamese, other Central American languages, or is it just one language, several languages? What is the depth of this?
So my intention right now is to provide it to Spanish speakers, because that has been the big demand from the community. Other languages have not requested this particular service. If it were to be requested and we have the funding, I think we should give it an opportunity. But right now, there has been no request by any other language speakers, speakers of other languages.
The operating supplies. Can you talk to us about the operating supplies?
So that will be an opportunity for us. Oftentimes, in the city council office, we wish to do and have services or purchase any equipment necessary, and we have to go through all the hurdles to get it. For instance, we have that projector that is new. Luckily, we didn't have to pay for it. We have a new screen TV that was necessary. We didn't have to pay for it because the IT department also took, well, I think this was the water and sewer department, the IT department, the IT department also gave us a new computer. So oftentimes, we are relying on other departments to acquire what is needed by the city council office, and we depend on them. And I think that we should be an office that is dependent on our own, and we should be able to have some funding available to make necessary purchases when they come. This year, we've been able to purchase equipment that is necessary, but oftentimes not through our office, but through other departments. So if the departments are tied in money, we wouldn't be able to accomplish that. Luckily, this year, we were able to accomplish a lot, but that might not be the case in the future. So I think it's important that we have it as a discretionary account for our own purposes if, when we have it necessary, as necessary.
And if you would, Mr. President, refresh my memory regarding the eighty-five hundred dollar spike at purchase of services.
That is, the city council, we voted about-
Clear.gov?
Yes, about six months ago, I believe, to implement it for the new fiscal year. And that was the charge that they had.
And that's the entirety of eighty-five hundred dollars for a full calendar year?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No further questions? Any other questions regarding this? Thank you very much, Council President. So our evening here is about to wind to a close. We'll be back here tomorrow. I will make one recommendation, just to provide a little better flow to the meetings. Starting tomorrow, we're going to try this out and see what happens. If you've got any serious objections, please let me know. But tomorrow, Mr. Ryanello, I would like to see the following. We're going to do two tiers of departments. We're going to do a seven o'clock tier and an eight o'clock tier, so people aren't necessarily here for big portions of time, and they can try to relieve them of the time sync. And so, my thought would be to have at the seven o'clock tier, the public library, cemetery, personnel, employee benefits, council on aging, and at the eight o'clock tier, have the city attorney and the police department. Councilors, if you want to try this tomorrow, we'll see how this works, and it may work better.
I think that sounds fair, because that will allow department heads the opportunity to not be here unnecessarily.
Right. And I think that we can, there's plenty of time, an hour, to deal with those departments, and I think the city attorney and the PD will probably take a little more time, and that's a little more open. So, Mr. Ryanello, would you be so kind as to get the word out to those department heads? I think they would appreciate that.
Excuse me, I'll send the email tonight.
Very good. So, everything is at seven o'clock tomorrow, except for police and the city attorney, and we can deal with them at eight o'clock, or shortly thereafter, depending on how the flow goes. And if that works well, we can maybe do the same thing, or modulate it on, for Thursday's meeting.
Modulate it?
Just made that word up. It's getting late. All right. So, do we adjourn? I think, because we have four different meetings, right?
Yeah, we've posted.
No, I think we adjourned, because we posted four meetings, so we can adjourn and come back. So, anything else? No? Well, is there a motion to adjourn?
To move?
Motion to adjourn. Second in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye's have it. We'll see you tomorrow night, May thirty-first, at seven P.M.